Ms. Wu.
Here.
Ms. Hershey.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Colebrook.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here. Next item on the agenda is public input. I'd like to read the instructions for public input. Members of the public may join the meeting as a Zoom webinar or a telephone participant to make verbal input, or you may email input to the city council at citycouncil@urbanaillinois.us, and the meeting record will stay open until the end of this meeting. We'll accept public input until the end of this meeting. This is a time for council members to listen to the public discussion, debate, commentary won't take place during this period. Public comments are limited to four minutes per person. Public input will total no more than one hour unless that time is shortened or extended by a majority vote of the members present. The meeting chair has the option of giving priority to speakers who want to comment on specific agenda items upon which a vote will be taken. A person may speak once during the meeting and may not cede time to another person. We ask that you address your comments to the public body as a whole, maintain respect for the process, and respect for members of the council, the city staff, and the general public. The meeting chair or member of the public body has the authority to call a speaker out of order for using abusive harassing threatening defamatory remarks. If the speaker refuses to cease the remarks, the meeting chair may mute the speaker's microphone and will ask the speaker to send the remainder of their remarks via email for inclusion in the meeting record, which again, the meeting record closes at adjournment of this meeting. So I want to thank you all for helping us conduct respectful and productive meetings. We have one item on this agenda and it's resolution number 2020-11-058R, and it's a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promotional and marketing agreement with the Urbana Business Association for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. And Carol Mitten had wanted to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. This was, as you recall, a discussion item at the last council meeting. And I just wanted to introduce it again. And as you recall, Stephanie McMahon explained that the resolution and agreement before you would reimburse UBA for eligible expenses for the first six months of FY 2020 and 2021 in the amount of $28,907.50. And I just wanted to explain to folks who might not be as familiar with this as the council in terms of the budget for UBA. It's very dependent on events in order to have the budget balance. And already, we were concerned when the proposal was first brought to us because there was a lot of creativity that UBA had brought to the table in terms of trying to switch their traditional events into a virtual format. But we were very concerned about the tenuous nature of things that had been untried. And already with the cancellation of the market in the square, the budget for UBA is in the red based on what they had projected at the beginning of the year. So the decision that we made was that we would prefer the investment on the part of the city to be in providing services directly to businesses rather than in trying to sustain an organization with a business plan that works most of the time, but it is not conducive to a pandemic. And rather than trying to sustain an organization that could then provide the services, we'd rather make the investment more directly in the services. And that's why we've hired Darius White, who had been until recently the executive director for the UBA. And Darius, his first day was today, and he's already pretty seamlessly working into our team. And we're just thrilled to have him onboard. But I just wanted to say that by way of introduction that that was the primary motivating force for us to take this approach with UBA this year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah.
Mary Alice.
I've got it. Yeah.
Dennis can go first. That's fine.
Dennis, can you put your video on?
I probably have to check out of the meeting and restart everything.
Okay, never mind.
I'll just be invisible at the moment.
Okay.
So, yeah, I appreciate the commentary that you've explained, Carol. And one of the other aspects of the city's program, I understand, is to no longer provide space on Main Street for the UBA. Can you explain what the intent of the city is in that regard?
Well, we have actually a number of uses of our own that we hope to either have share the space or one or the other. We have, there's a strong desire on the part of Andrea Rudy and Lily Wilcock to have a presence on Main Street for the comprehensive plan that people could, if we get to the point of having in-person meetings again, or where they could stop by and take a look at some of the proposals that we're developing or stop by and give feedback just to have a presence on Main Street. But we also have people that work in parking meter maintenance that are in some really dismal space right now in the parking deck. And they have also expressed an interest to be in space that doesn't flood and that is climate controlled. So we have a couple of competing internal uses for that. And that's why we were reclaiming the space.
So the parking meter collection and the potential work on the comprehensive plan is more important to the city than sustaining its business association downtown? At least in the respect during the COVID pandemic change to at least allow it to have office space? Is the city offering to share office space or to take over the office space?
We are taking over the office space. Given the program that the UBA is interested in continuing in the current times, as I understand it, they want to have a mentoring program, and that's a business-to-business mentoring program. And aside from some storage of documents, I don't know that they're going to be needing a lot of office space for meetings. Anyway, everybody's meeting virtually. So it's hard to justify having to go outside, having the city go outside to procure additional office space at a cost to the city when we're offering that to the UBA, where we have been offering that to the UBA as an in-kind contribution.
If the UBA were to be able to hold events in the future, which of course, we all hope that next summer will be completely different, will you reconsider that offer of making space for them available? Or are they going to have to find their own space downtown?
One thing that I have learned, and I think we've all learned in the city, is that trying to predict what happens in the next week, the next month, the next six months is not a productive exercise. So I mean, there's a fluidity to everything that we're doing. And so I'm not going to say we wouldn't consider it, but I don't want people to think that there's a commitment there.
No, but I guess my concern is that failing a commitment, I have just this concern for the viability of businesses to have their own voice in the downtown through the UBA.
Well, I have a lot of confidence in Tina Stover. She was incredibly committed to the continuation of the UBA and also to making it a self-sustaining organization. So I'm going to bet on her ability to deliver on the, on her desire to turn that into a self-sustaining organization.
Yeah, I guess I'd have to agree with you that she is a very motivated and intelligent lady that I certainly hope will bring about continued work that'll be representative of the community and as well as the downtown businesses to give them a voice.
She's a great leader for that organization.
Thank you.
Mary Alice. Unmute myself. Dennis had asked some of the questions. I just wanted to kind of summarize this proposal. So the city is offering funding in half the amount that we originally anticipated to end on December 31st. So it's around $28,000. And then the in-kind services end on March 31st in 2021. And beyond that, there won't be any city involvement with UBA. Is that correct?
As we foresee it right now, there's no commitment for the rest of the fiscal year. What happens beyond this fiscal year is, you know, we'll just deal with that as it comes.
So are there any plans? I know it's difficult to see with a crystal ball what's going to happen in the summer. But are there any plans to have, you know, a touch base meeting with UBA beginning of the next fiscal year to see where everything stands?
Well, I mean, I don't see this as like we go our separate ways. I mean, I think that there's going to be a dynamic relationship going forward. We're still very interested in supporting the businesses who are members of the UBA, and we're interested in supporting businesses who are not members of the UBA. So we're going to continue to have a strong relationship with them. It'll just be different.
Okay. And then my final thing is just a formatting thing. On the item that's actually posted online on page number two of the agreement, it looks like there's like a track changes thing that's been turned off or on there. So you might want to check and make sure that that is the last, the most recent version.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would just hop in here and assure people that we have a very dynamic and relationship between city staff and businesses in Urbana, not just the downtown businesses, but we've spent a lot of time with the downtown businesses over the past eight months in responding to COVID, and we will continue to do that going forward. So I would say the city efforts complement those of UBA. And frankly, I think it's going to be a very productive relationship. And again, we have no idea what the future holds, except that it will change every day. So we have to be ready to respond.
Also, Mayor, I'd like to just say that I certainly do support providing them funding to reimburse them for expenditures that they've already expended and to continue their relationships and the support at least that we can offer them for the next six months, which this resolution provides.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay. Is there a motion? Sharice.
I'd like to move it for resolution number 2020-11-058R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promotional and marketing agreement Urbana Business Association FY 2020 to 2021. Be moved for approval. Is that right?
That'll do?
Second. Second.
Was that Jared?
Or Bill. I think he started first.
Either. Bill Colebrook, okay. Any further discussion? And you know what? I realized I read the instructions for public input, and then I don't believe I actually asked for public input. Is there anyone who wishes to offer public input? Grace, welcome. And I apologize for that. It's been a very long day.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I came in a little late, so I didn't catch the whole presentation, but just wanted to add my input that I hope that we are doing things that are helping the development of our community for the people primarily and also acknowledging that businesses are a part of that, but it's not all of it. I'd also really been wondering about the issue with the visit champagne county and buy black chambana thing of taking their directory without credit or permission or payment. And I think that that's definitely something worth continuing to look into and thinking about how we interact with our business associations so that it's not such a white business dominated space. I think that we really need to encourage more diversity in our businesses, and that starts with policies and funding and kind of how you all prioritize things. So that's all I wanted to say about that for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, thank you very much. All right, I believe we are ready to vote. Did you have your hand up, Mary Alice? No? Okay. I believe we're ready to vote on this resolution. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Ms. Hershey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you very much. That's the only item for consideration on this agenda. So this meeting is adjourned, and we will start back at seven o'clock with a committee of the whole meeting chaired by Dennis Roberts. Thank you.
It is now seven o'clock.
All right, so that means that we can begin our meeting. I call the committee of the whole meeting for November 16th, 2020 to order. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Ms. Hershey.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Present.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, fellas.
You're welcome.
Um, we have to now approve the minutes of our previous meeting from October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. Would there be a motion to approve the minutes, or are there any changes to the, to the minutes before we do that?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
All right. Okay. Who would like to second again?
I'll second.
Okay, Jared Miller. Okay, thank you. Were there corrections to the minutes? Anybody have any corrections? Okay, I don't see any. Those in favor indicate by saying I.
I think we have to do a roll call.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We do. Thank you. So, uh, city clerk, please call the roll for us.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, those are approved minutes. Are there additions to the agenda?
I have none. Carol, do we have any?
No.
Okay.
No. Okay. All right, so that leads us to presentations and public input. I don't see that we have a presentation this evening. Well, we do. It's going to be later in the, in the program as indicated on the agenda as number eleven. So if that's appropriate for everybody, we'll just go on to opening up a public input. So I have a statement to read concerning how public input is to be, proceed for a city council meetings and using Zoom as a media. The city takes public comment via email, written format and verbally. On October twenty twelfth, two thousand and twenty, the Urbana City Council approved new rules for public input during remote electronic meetings. These rules are listed on each agenda for the city-sponsored public meetings. Members of the public may join meetings as either a Zoom webinar or a telephone participant to make the verbal input. This is the time for the committee members to listen to the public discussion, debate, or commentary will not take place during this period. Public comments are limited to four minutes per person. And public input will tell no more than one hour unless certain or extended by a majority of both the members present. The meeting chair has the option of giving priority to speakers who wish to comment on specific agenda items, upon which a vote will be taken. A person may speak once during the meeting and not cede time to another person. We ask that you address your comments to the public body as a whole and maintain respect for the process and respect for the members of the, of the city council, city staff, and the general public. The meeting chair member or the public, public body has the authority of the public body, has the authority to call a speaker out of order for using abusive, harassing, or threatening or defamatory remarks. If the speaker refuses to cease the remarks, the meeting chair may mute the speaker's microphone and ask that the speaker, please send the remainder of their remarks via email for inclusion in the meeting records. So thank you all, all the new citizens of Urbana for helping us conduct respectful and productive meetings. As a Zoom webinar participant, you may wish to speak during public input. What you do is to click the raise your hand button, which you'll find at the bottom of your screen, and wait to be called upon by the presiding officer. Please state your first and last name for the meeting's record. For those who are speaking to us by telephone, to raise your hand, you may do so by pressing, star nine once, and you will be called upon by the host or the presiding officer. Please state your name, first name and last name for the meeting record. Public comments must be sent prior to the closing of the meeting record at the time of the adjournment, adjournment, unless otherwise noted, to the following email address, The subject line of the email must include the words "public input" and a meeting date. November sixteenth is today's date. Email public comments labeled as such will be incorporated into the public record. Copies or of emails will be posted after the meeting minutes have been approved, and those will help you guide yourself as you do public input with us. So I'd like to see then who are individuals who would like to do public input. I see we have five individuals. And in order that I see them, I will start, I invite Tracy Gloss to please provide public input.
Hi, good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Good evening. My name is Stacy Gloss, and I am the Chair of the Urbana Sustainability Advisory Commission. My comment this evening is to express my support and enthusiasm to the city for the Lumpkin Family Foundation Grant for Street Trees in Urbana, which will be accepted this evening. The Sustainability Advisory Commission is excited to support the Sustainability and Resilience Office's efforts on this grant. This is a wonderful contribution toward building healthy and sustainable communities through employing ecosystem services such as tree planting to reduce heat island effects in areas with fewer trees. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much also. All right. The next individual would be Dottie Vero Weiss. Dottie? Did you wish to speak?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, you can. We can.
Okay. Um, my name is Dottie Vero Weiss, and I've been a resident of Urbana for about seven years. I'm a member of the Urbana Champagne Friends Meeting, which meets in Urbana on East Main Street. And in September, we approved a statement on police violence that I'd like to read. And I believe that you've already received copies, but I wanted to, to read it in addition. And it has relevance to a couple of the issues that are being dealt with this evening and this week. We recognize that the role of the police can be challenging. Even when they deal with difficult situations, they're expected to show respect to every community member in every interaction and to treat each individual equally, regardless of race, or age, or gender, or economic status. We were distressed by the recent violent arrest of a young black woman by Urbana police officers and by other episodes of violence by police against community members, disproportionately against people of color, similar to what has been occurring across our nation. These actions cause both physical injury and emotional trauma to the victims, their families, the community, and even the police themselves. We understand that this is not just a problem of individuals, but that some of our systems accept and may even encourage this violence and racism, which causes moral injury to those who carry it out, as well as the injury to the victim. As friends or Quakers, we believe that every person has that of God within them, some of the divine spirit of goodness and love. We believe that all people should be treated with respect and care. This leads to our commitment to using nonviolent methods to resolve conflicts when they arise, as we do not want to harm others, either physically or emotionally. These beliefs also require us to examine our own behavior as individuals and as a group, and to speak out when we see injustice, violence, and oppression in the public realm. We must address systemic racism within ourselves, as well as in our social, religious, and economic institutions, and in our civil society. We stand in solidarity with those who march and protest against the police violence that disproportionately affects black and brown communities, and against the complacency of the people in our community who don't object. We're called to hold up the value of each of the people who are suffering from this violence and to work to change the systems that perpetuate racism and violence. In keeping with our values, we encourage city and county officials to take the following steps. Number one, increase police training and de-escalation techniques and include follow-up sessions where body cam and dashboard cam videos are reviewed with officers to discuss what was done well and possible alternatives for each situation that would have better outcome. Two, strengthen civilian police review boards in the county and municipalities by ensuring they have access to all complaints and have subpoena power in order to improve performance, and also to give community members faith in the system. Three, develop community forums and other measures to establish effective two-way communication. Four, increase social services in the community to address issues such as homelessness, substance addiction, mental illness, and domestic violence. Five, in addition to having community-based preventive services, strengthen linkages and collaboration between law enforcement and behavioral health programs. The two issues that this relates to would be the use of force policy and also the traffic stop data and the importance of continuing it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Dottie. All right, the next individual is Tracy Chung. Would you like to speak?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, I'm Tracy Chung from Urbana. I'm gonna start tonight with a question. Can we trust the Urbana Police Department and the Chief Seraphin's leadership even with the proposed policy changes? Last Thursday, during the use of force listening session, after months of denying any misconduct, Brian Seraphin admitted that Officer Eric Ruff's handling of his rifle was a violation of policy during the Elia Lewis arrest. The public had been right all along, but this admission only happened after a concerned resident took their time to actually look at the evidence presented, something that UPD failed to do. Even then, it took prodding from residents, week after week, before Seraphin finally decided to say something. Seraphin should immediately issue a formal press release acknowledging the misconduct, acknowledging the failures of UPD's own investig, internal investigation, how this failure came to be, and how the changes proposed ensure that this failure does not ever happen again. Mayor Marlin used $20,000 of taxpayer dollars for an external review that was also a failure. Hillid Hines gave the thumbs up to UPD's review, which the public knew was flawed. Mayor Marlin needs to address the fact that up to today, there has been no meaningful review. I repeat, no meaningful review performed for the Elia Lewis arrest. Seeing that the public trust in the police department is so broken at this time, I find it astounding that we are once again trying to lessen civilian police oversight. Carol Mitten's latest actions regarding the civilian police review board have been the opposite of transparent. Why did Carol Mitten give a presentation to city council without the CPRB, without consulting CPRB members on its contents? Carol Mitten made some rather bold claims about the complaints and appeals costing forty-two thousand and hundred and twenty-two thousand. Carol Mitten then proceeded to say, quote unquote, "We do not track the number of hours that we spend." Gosh, if I were to claim in public that something cost $100,000, like what Karen, Carol Mitten did, I had better bring my receipts. Regarding Carol Mitten's CPRB presentation on October twenty-sixth, I'm still curious why Mayor Marlin told the public that the scheduled appeal hearing was canceled due to the appellant and CPRB members having scheduling problems. Did Carol Mitten lie to Mayor Marlin about the actual reason? Did Carol Mitten try to cover up the reason that the hearing was canceled?
Chairman?
Because Mitten herself did not follow procedures.
I think she's out of order.
CPRB ordinance.
All right.
It is concerning that Carol Mitten believes.
Be sure to be more respectful.
That, I wish to continue. It's concerning that Carol Mitten believes she's exempt from the procedures mandated by CPRB ordinance. At the same time, Carol Mitten is urging city council to amend the ordinance so that procedural or administrative complaints will be excluded from the CPRB complaints and appeals process. From Carol Mitten's proposed changes to the CPRB, it was clear that her main goal was to make sure certain types of complaints were ineligible to go through the appeals process. This is a terrible move.
Let's try not to be too opinionated and try to stick to facts, please.
These, I think these are facts. Sorry, you really interrupted me. I think this is a terrible move by Carol Mitten that would lessen civilian oversight.
Chair, these are opinions. These are opinions.
Yeah, they are. Okay, of course, if the public can express opinions, and we are doing better. Thank you. Tracy, you're doing a little bit better. Thank, we appreciate your civility. Perhaps the content's not exactly perfect, but thank you for trying. All right, the next person up is Mr. B. Dunn, fifty-four, five, four, two, five Gmail. Maybe you could express your name, and we open your public opinion or public comments.
Hey, my name's Brian Dunn. I'm from Champagne. And, uh, yeah, I just brought my dog in from outside, and it's really cold outside, you know, which is kind of an opinion, but something I think I could state here. And it gets me thinking that I hope that our community is doing everything possible to keep people in warm houses with running water. And if there is any ability that any motion you can make would either influence or cause that to be a certainty, that would be amazing, because as someone who is immunocompromised, I can't imagine the terror I would feel being uncertain of those conditions going into these winter months, knowing that to seek, seek shelter with someone else or in a group setting would put me at great risk as our numbers creep up to, you know, close to 10%. Those are not good odds. And, you know, sorry if these are opinions. I'm not really sure after that last comment what I'm supposed to be doing here, but I just hope to express to you that it is imperative that you do everything possible to take care of your community. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. All right, the next individual with the raised hand is Bo Barber.
Hello? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Um, so last time I talked about no Ameren shut-offs and the number of disconnections in September, which occurred over the period of one week, Urbana had forty-seven disconnections by Ameren. We have an update now for the data from October, and there were, for Urbana only, there was two hundred and twenty-seven disconnections by Ameren, Illinois. In addition to this, there were eighty-three disconnections by American Water in Urbana alone. This is getting worse, and I'm working with CUPHD and Cunningham Township via Daniel Chen with as best as I can. But this is just an endless tide of disconnections that are going to be occurring, and I've worked with them to try and reach out to people and figure out, you know, can, get in contact with people, try and point them to the right direction so they can get the financial aid they need, talk to Ameren to get something set up. Ameren purposely sends us notices, notifies CUPHD, notifies them basically less than twenty-four hours in advance of when they're going to potentially disconnect services for people. And out of, just from November first to November sixteenth today, Urbana has received one hundred and eighty-one disconnection notices. And every other day I, I get more. They switch between Urbana one day and Champagne the next. They switch between Urbana one day and Champaign the next. And I'm, I'm exhausted and I'm not sure how much I can keep going fighting this losing battle. And coming up in December, that winter moratorium that I used to even think was going to be an end-all-be-all is not an end-all-be-all. It's a means-tested thing like we currently have now. What we have here is a means-tested program with Amrin still shutting people off. They shut off 227 people. It's a means-tested program and it is actually, the winter moratorium had weaker protections. This is not going to be solved by the governor. It's not going to be solved by the winter moratorium. It's going to come down to the local governments. And that's why I'm pleading with you. You have the power to act. I, you passed the resolution promising that you would act and I understand there's things you can, you know, to settle out, but we're not, we don't have time. That's not a luxury. Where I've worked with organizers, people have found homes abandoned because they've lost their water and they've lost, they've lost their power. And I know that because these people have gone to houses that they know people lived in, there was stuff still in the front yard. And these people went by these places over the course of three different days, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and no one was there. They went different hours of the day. Those people were gone. And it's going to get worse as people abandon their homes to find shelter elsewhere during a pandemic that spreads like a wildfire. And so you, I know you've received an email today that explained what you can do. You can act on this immediately and you can, whether for whatever period of time that you can do it, you have to do it. I'm begging you because people are going to die because of this. And I can only do so much with organizers that I'm working with. Daniel Chenoweth can only do so much and we're just, we're trying, but you need to act and you need to act now because this is going to get bad and it's already bad and it's going to get worse. But thank you for letting me comment.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I do believe we are putting, going to address something about that eventually here and we hope to share that with you. There is also, I wanted to comment that the city offers a list of immediate assistance resources on the city website for Urbana rental mortgage and utility assistance through the township and through different organizations in the community. And I encourage anybody who has an issue with their services to please use those resources if they are available. All right, Grace Wilkin, your turn to speak for public input. You have four minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Grace Wilkin. I'm an Urbana resident and I want to talk about the discussion item today. And this report shows that, you know, we have some blatant racial discrepancies in our police and policing and that these are deep issues that need to be addressed. Concerned about the pilot program, it seems really vague. Sounds like officers can arrest or do traffic stops for any reason within this area and also outside of this area. It just doesn't make sense to me. And I think that it's not meaningfully addressing the deeper issues of how we support our communities and how we deal with racial issues and police accountability. And there are a lot of deep issues here that go along with traffic safety and community safety. I also want to talk about item seven, this grant for tree research and tree planting. I think that's a great thing and really important to do. And that's great that our city staff was able to get that grant through and accepted from the foundation. And I'm also wondering if the combined almost $10,000 additional pay to city staff from the city is necessary. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but just a question I wanted to ask if that's within the scope of their full-time job already or not, just something to think about with the pandemic and economic hardships. And then another item I want to talk about was continuing to work on preventing utility shut offs, whether that's pressuring state and county governments, the utility companies directly making emergency orders, whatever needs to be done to try and keep people safe and as housed as possible. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Grace. Next up, we have Ellen Axelrod. Ellen?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Could you put up the clock, please? Thank you. Hello from Bloomington. Today, the Bloomington City Council has voted unanimously to start to prepare action on utility shut offs. Next week, they are going to have an in-depth discussion with their legal staff about what additional material they can add to their ordinance in order to act. That took one discussion. How long has it been with you all? I appreciate that you have acted, but Bloomington isn't exactly a progressive town. They're in the middle of also a Republican county. So what I want to emphasize here is that it is very clear, even in the definition of emergency services in 20ILCS 3305, the whole state statute, which is called the Illinois Emergency Services and Disaster Agency Act, that the emergency services includes in their definition the temporary restoration of public utilities. Amrin Illinois, Illinois American Water, all of the rest of the major corporations are public utilities. The Illinois Commerce Commission regulates public utilities. The email that you were sent this morning specified very clearly how the existing ordinance, not a new ordinance that needs to be adopted, allows for these emergency powers, which again are not enacted by ordinance, but enabled by emergency statute so that one can act through the emergency services and disaster agency. Decatur is one of the most significantly affected communities in addition to Springfield. They have had hundreds more disconnections this past month of October. Their positivity rate is up to 20% and that's before evictions even hit. That's coming for us next. And if we do not do everything that we can, again, proactively, we are going to be in a much more dire straits. That's also being said, I know that this is difficult with our general assembly effectively disbanded and with the governor not calling them back into action. He unilaterally governs who gets what sort of emergency funding. I would ask that the budget be secondary to the safety of our residents because while we can make up debts in the future, we cannot bring people back from the dead. And I'm speaking to you very plainly because that is where things are at. Last time I had checked, we had over 4,000 people on ventilators in our state. The death toll is around 10,000 plus. Most people who are on ventilators do not come back. Our death toll is going to mount. And again, evictions are about to happen and not every county is like Champaign County where the Public Health District Administrator Julie Pride agreed to talk to Sheriff Dustin Heerman to stop evictions, just like he had promised to do back in March or April and hasn't promised again since. So please, more than words, we need you to use the emergency powers that you have available. We are running out of time in Champaign County. Even NPR said earlier that this weekend, we have had the highest number of COVID cases cumulative since the pandemic has started. We're running out of time. Please act.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Ellen. Are there any other individuals who would like to participate in public comment at this time? I'm trying to recall if there had been any public comment offered via email today. Certainly there was one or two concerning one of the cases, the zoning, the zoning Board of Appeal or the zoning issue that we're going to be talking about in our future here. So, all right, okay.
And I think.
Yes, I see Evelyn Underwood. Yeah, I call upon you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good evening, everyone. I sent a short email. And so let me read that quickly. The chief's recommendation 2021 pilot program, colon, Bishop King James Underwood and I, Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, would like to go on record as supporting Mr. Daryl Cruz's draft resolution authorizing police, policing changes to improve equity in traffic stops, practice and tactics. We believe that this will put the Urbana City Council on record committing to the change needed. The 2021 pilot program is a good first step. Well, it's a good first step, but we need a more comprehensive program, which is clearly defined in the draft resolution that Mr. Cruz submitted. Thank you for your consideration. Now, I would just like to say there's a lot, I would like to say that 23-page document, we've gone through that and we see in the latter part, especially, you know, I'm not a statistician, but we can see in plain view and eyeballing that disparity, you know, so we can see that. And, and we know about implicit bias, not evil, but implicit bias. I know about the training and all that. You know, we've been at this a long time, a long time. And I can see with Mr. Cruz's document and also the two-page informational piece that the chief gave to the mayor, the memo that seemingly, don't you agree Bishop, that it's a good first step? I would like to say further that we need to have maybe a, Bishop had a name for it. What did you call that? Well, a short, I can't, I don't have that, what he called it. A dashboard report quarterly by race to the, to the public and to the council to, just so we won't forget. And that's one reason that we need something in writing. I don't think we read it for an ordinance or anything of that nature yet, but a policy, resolution. So it'll be in front of the council, in front of the people that this is very serious and we need to do something. And as I fore stated, that first step is a good step, but we need a more comprehensive document. And I think what we are supporting and others, and what we talk to, people we've talked to, is supporting is something that the council can do. Thank you very much.
Okay, Dr. Underwood, thank you for your commentary. Okay, I don't see other raised hands at this point. So I guess we're going to close now public input for this meeting and go to the other parts of the agenda. So is there a staff report?
I do have.
Do you have one, Merrick?
Yes, I have, I have a number of items. First of all, I wanted to repeat the announcement that the vacant City Council Ward Two seat is available for people to apply for that. If they go to the City of Urbana's homepage, there's a link to the application. We'll be taking applications until November 30th. The person who is appointed to this seat will fill the seat until the next councilist takes their seat on May 6th. So again, on the homepage for Ward Two, applications are being taken for City Council seat. Number two, I wanted to thank everyone in the public who participated in our use of force listening sessions. There were three separate sessions last week. We are still taking comments on the Urbana's use of force, the police use of force policy. They can email that to useofforcepolicy@urbanaillinois.us and those comments will be taken until 5:00 PM Monday. We had a, you know, we had a reasonable turnout over those three sessions, both from organizations and individuals who made suggestions. One of the themes that emerged was clear was that we need to have very explicit, and we know this, and that's what's going to be incorporated, language regarding de-escalation. But we also got very, you know, a number of other good comments. Participants were able to speak for five minutes each multiple times. We had time for Q and A. So, you know, it was a reasonable, it was a reasonable experience and we hope to do more of those. And I just again, want to thank people for participating. Third, the, I wanted to talk about where we are with our response to the pandemic. This week, we've reached, well, in the past couple of weeks, we reached really a terrible milestone, the one that no one wanted to reach back in the spring, and that was sustained community spread. So I've been on a number of calls with public health leaders, with, with the governor's staff, et cetera. We are at the point where there's sustained community spread, which means this virus is everywhere. And people need to assume that everybody they come in contact with could very well be contagious. This is a very different situation than we were in even a few, a couple of months ago, certainly in the spring and summer. And it's not where we want it to be, but we're here, so we have to respond accordingly. Our positivity rate has increased on the governor's call today. He reported, he reported that there were 5,200 patients hospitalized in Illinois and that's a 70% increase compared to two weeks ago. So we are, we are dramatically increasing our hospitalizations. 81 deaths, over 11,000 people have died in Illinois. What the governor pointed out today also was that we have no reserve healthcare workers waiting in the wings. Back in the spring and summer, people had signed up from other parts of the country to come help Illinois if we needed it. We don't have that option anymore because every part of the country is in the same boat. That's what sustained community spread means. So those reserve healthcare workers are not available to help us here in Illinois. And our own healthcare workers are exhausted and we are close to meeting or exceeding our hospital capacity. We've made, we have plans in place for surge facilities, but really, you know, this is dependent on the, the ability of our healthcare workers to stay on the job and stay healthy. And again, we have to assume everybody is infectious and that is why the messaging has been just continuous about holiday gatherings, avoiding gatherings. It's, you know, the, the spread is coming from private gatherings and it hasn't, you know, our, our own employees aren't immune from this either. So the, the spread is starting to affect city staff as well. We've responded, we're moving into A and B teams where some employees are on duty one day and another group are on duty another day. That's true in police and also in public works. We have more people being sent home with computers to work remotely. There's a point where we may see an impact on city services. So I ask the public to be very patient and to be, to be patient if this happens because our city staff is being infected, you know, impacted by the virus as well. There's been, we have been on the, the, the utilities and evictions. Governor announced that the eviction moratorium for Illinois had been extended, but there are some changes that were made as of November 14th. And it's, it's kind of disturbing that these changes happened. Landlords can file evictions unless tenants give them a written declaration that they should be protected due to reasons related to. That they should be protected due to reasons related to COVID. So there now has to be a written statement by tenants that they're directly impacted by COVID in order to avoid an eviction. We're just got this information today, still digesting it, trying to figure out what this means for how we respond locally, but that that is. New. I, we've received information regarding the utility shut offs. We are exploring all our options. It's not as simple as people think from a legal standpoint. The ICC has has stated that they believe. And they are the authority for regulating utilities. And when local governments take action, there are consequences. So we have to explore what those consequences are. I know how people feel. I know how desperate some people are and we will work, do whatever we can. And hard as hard as we can to keep people in their homes. So we're just trying to sort all this out right now and I I will be calling. The mayor of Bloomington to see exactly what route they're taking as far as a local ordinance. I want to reiterate again how important it is for people to not gather over the holidays, to not gather in private homes. That's where the spread is happening. It's not so much in the schools, it's not so much in other places, but it's in the private homes. Where people feel safe, they feel like they can meet with a few family members, a few friends. And the reality is, everybody has the potential to be positive and they are in many cases. And and we're seeing the result of that. So when you have people getting sick, two weeks later, you get people in the hospital. Couple of weeks later, you start to see the deaths. So we are starting, you know, we're just at the beginning of. Some very, very sad times and we need people to change their Thanksgiving plans, change your travel plans, stay home. Stay apart and figure out an alternative way to celebrate the the holidays because this, this is a very, very. Critical period. The vaccines that have been developed, there's another one announced today. It will be months, it will be months before those can be distributed and before we start to see an effect. So we're looking at, you know, we're looking well into twenty twenty one before we see any relief. And and we need to keep as many people safe as possible. So I'll keep, I keep folks updated. Specific, I can tell you about local ordinances on utilities, but we're, we're, you know. Options are. But it, but but again, the state also has a great deal of. Power in this regard and I really am going to be on a call with. Governor Pritzker tomorrow and they're going to be announcing new mitigations and I will bring up the issue of. Utility shut offs and evictions with the governor's staff tomorrow and the governor on this call. And last, I wanted to let you know that we're working on a virtual holiday market. Darius White, who's come on board as of today, will be helping coordinate that and. And it will be an opportunity for people to shop safely and to support our local business. Because when you support local business, you support local jobs and families and and keep food on the table and keep people in their homes. So we're doing everything we can to support our local businesses as well. So that's, that's my report for today. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor.
Can I ask Mayor the question, Mayor the question?
Yeah, go ahead, Mary Alice.
Thank you. Diane, I'm wondering, and if people have talked about the city of Champagne's ordinance on utility shut offs. Are you aware of the city of Champagne taking action against the utility company since we're having both termination notices both in Champagne and Urbana?
I'm told that their legal division believes they do not have the authority to do that on a local level.
So at this time, to the best of your knowledge, the city of Champagne is not, is not taking anything into the city's hands in terms of.
Well, I wouldn't speak, I wouldn't go that far, but all I know is last time I asked, I believe they, they, they said they did not believe they had the authority. To act under that particular. Part of their code. It's a, it's a really, it's not a simple, it's not simple at all. It's very complicated to do this on a local level. So that's why we need to, we need to do the research in order to determine this. And I know, I know people, I know time is of an essence, but we also have to be able to do the research to do this.
Yeah, I mean, in in my opinion, it's one thing to have an ordinance and it's another thing to have some kind of enforcement mechanism. So I'd be very interested in any communities that have been successful in those enforcement mechanisms.
Well, we're trying to find out. So far, we haven't found any. That's, that's the issue. It's, it's. That's why I, you know, in an ideal world, this would happen on the state level. That's where, that's where the authority, that's where the Illinois Commerce Commission is and that's where the authority lies. And that's why I'm going to make that point with the governor again tomorrow.
Bill Brown, did you have a comment?
I'm just similar to that. I wondered if if you'd had any conversations with John Dwyer or Emergency Services. I think Alan mentioned that the E S has had some authority to. To prevent shut offs.
That's one of the conversations we'll have. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, would. If we enacted something. Is. Is the legal department concerned that there might be a suit against the city by a utility? If we enacted such a.
I'll let Jim speak to that and the answer is yes, but here you go.
I would merely back up exactly what the mayor says. Yes, that suit could be very expensive. It would pit obviously private utility companies against Urbana. My research is consistent with the mayor's. I have yet to find a municipality in Illinois. That has enacted one, a a moratorium on a private utility. I have spoken directly with legal in Champagne and I have been advised they do not believe they have the authority. And indeed, people have represented to them that Urbana has a legal authority. I have today gone through the Illinois Emergency Services Act. Thank you, Councilmember Miller, for the quick sight. So I didn't have to, I knew that we had one. I didn't want to have to dig, but I, in fact, I just went through it a second time just before this meeting. And that is the act that authorizes the governor to issue the executive orders that he has. The act does refer to public, political subdivisions and municipalities and cities. But as I read the act, and nowhere does it confer the authority on them to act independently to issue. Private utility shut off moratoriums. Further. Echoing what the mayor said, I have communicated now twice with the Illinois Commerce Commission attorneys in that division. And they indicate as far as private utilities that municipalities do not have that authority. And that has been bolstered by I M L's Illinois Municipal League Attorney's opinion. He does say that publicly owned utilities, that municipalities that own utilities have the right because they own. Their public utilities that they own and operate, but not private.
Jared, Jared Miller.
Thanks, Dennis. Well, I'm, I'm curious. I don't, is Ameren a privately owned utility? Is it not publicly owned?
Hey, well, it may, it's, when I mean privately owned, I don't mean like a family owning it. I mean, it's an entity that is not owned by a government. Same with Exelon, same with Commonwealth Edison, same with Illinois American Water. They are, they have investors, shareholders. I don't know if Ameren's traded on a public, you know, securities exchange. Same with Illinois Water, but that wouldn't matter anyway. They are privately owned utilities. They're not government owned, nor are they government operated.
Okay, I mean, I guess I. I, I don't know, if the, if the distinction is between. Public, a public company and a private company, I think they're sorry to be there. Anyway, Jim, what I wanted to say was, you know. I know, yes, there is obviously if we're in violation of the law, there's, there's threat of lawsuits. But, you know, in my opinion, and probably in the larger opinion of of the public. You really think that a privately owned utility company is going to sue a municipality. For not letting them perform utility shut offs during a pandemic. That would directly be contributed to the people, the death of people in that municipality. You really think they're going to sue them and be like, you should have let us kill people. We, that's the law. We're allowed to do it. You really think that, so I'm not trying to be just, well, I'm just saying, I really don't see that actually coming to fruition.
Unfortunately, maybe I'm. More of a cynic than most, but I do see that and I'll explain why. One, they won't look at it. The way you or I might look at it and two, they're going to set a precedent. Because we have obviously hundreds, if not thousands of different units of local government. And if they all start adopting their own moratoriums. Then, you know, at some point, they basically shut down the utility. So I think to a stat, if we're the first, they will come after us. And here's how it will work. Obviously, if we adopt an ordinance and they violate the ordinance, we would have to prosecute them in ordinance violation court. Just like any other ordinance. They would respond with a suit or with a counterclaim for declaratory relief. And if we're way out on a limb and we have no legal basis, and at this point, I don't, you know, we have, may have moral basis and ethical basis. But the way I read the various statutes I've read, I don't, I honestly don't think we have a legal basis. The city not only will have to, you know, basically pay somebody to handle this very complex matter. But there's a good chance the city could get hit with sanctions, which would include paying the utilities attorneys. And it could be a very expensive piece of litigation that could grind on for some time. So unfortunately, I would rather be more idealistic, but in my forty-four years of doing this kind of stuff. You know, plaintiffs or organizations like that do this to set a precedent as much as deal with the particular issue. By the way. ICC and the utilities, including Ameren and Illinois Water, have entered into a voluntary moratorium arrangement. I don't know when it expires. And further, as we head closer to winter, and I think it's December one. There's a statute, if I recall correctly, that prohibits shutting off heat because somebody can't afford to pay. There are metrics in terms of when they can do that and when they can't.
Well, in, in, in any case, I I know we're talking about it, but you know, at some point we can. And get a response to that specific language that I, that I had cited in there that would be appreciated just because I feel like. There is legal wiggle room in that language that would allow us to do that. You know, if you see language in there that says, that says otherwise, you know. I I do recognize that there's not like a direct line that says municipalities can regulate utilities and that's really, you know, really what you're, you're looking for. In those things, but you know, I'm also not, you know, just as much as you you could say that you don't see where that is written. I don't see where it is not written. I don't see where it's explicitly prohibited either. So I think the argument could be, could be made both ways from the, from the statute. Yeah, yeah, maybe it's not explicit that we can, but it's also not explicit that we can't. And that, that would be my, my legal, you know, let's look into that as well.
Well, if I'm directed to do that by the mayor, I will gladly do that.
Okay, maybe this topic will come back to us as an agenda item in the future. But thank you, Mayor, for the staff report and the comments. We'll go now into the agenda items specifically. Starting with number six, resolution number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero five nine R. A resolution estimating the tax levy for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. And we have perhaps Elizabeth Hannah here to help us through this.
I I am here and I'm gonna run through a few quick slides here. So let me share my screen.
Okay.
Okay, are you seeing that now?
Now we are.
Okay, all right. So as, as. As we said, we're here to talk about the twenty twenty property tax levy. And if I can get it to flip the slide. Oh, okay. So I'm just gonna run through a few basics on property taxes here for anybody who hasn't been through this before. Or perhaps for members of the public who are not familiar with this. In Illinois, properties are assessed at one-third of fair market value. That's called the equalized assessed valuation. Proper, various properties may have exemptions that reduce the taxing value. The most common one is the six thousand dollar exemption for owner occupied properties. So the taxing value is the assessed valuation less the exemptions and that's the basis for calculating. Taxes for a particular property. So as an example, if you live in a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, that's assessed at one-third of market value. Or fifty thousand dollars. If the home is owner occupied, that additional exemption reduces the taxing value to forty-four thousand. And that would be the amount used to calculate the tax bill. So each taxing district, the city, the school district, the park district, et cetera, levies their own taxes. The county calculates the total tax rate for a particular property by adding the property tax rate. For all of those individual taxing districts that are applicable to that property. For most properties in Urbana, the city's property taxes are about thirteen percent of the total tax bill. Also worth noting, the taxis, taxes that we levy now in twenty twenty will be received by the city in calendar year twenty twenty one. So here's a quick look at kind of how the property tax bill in the city of Urbana breaks out. This is for the the twenty nineteen tax levy, the revenue that we're collecting now. And as you can see, schools are about fifty-five percent of the total. That's the largest piece of the pie. The city is at thirteen percent, parks at twelve, the county at eight and and everything else is, you know, smaller than that even. So looking at our assessed value over time, way back here in two thousand nine, we were close to six hundred million. And then you can see we, we had a big decrease when the hospitals came off the tax rolls. And then over time, we've been gaining a little bit. In twenty eighteen, we had a little blip when the. O S F properties were added back to the tax rolls, but then they were later removed. That's the blue part. And so now in in twenty twenty, we're looking, we're estimating that we'll be a little bit above six hundred million. So for a particular homeowner, the amount of taxes that they pay for the city. Varies, of course, based on the value of the property, but anywhere from about three hundred and sixty-nine dollars annually for a property valued at a hundred thousand. I've got a couple of increments in there, but up to about a thousand dollars a year for a property valued at two hundred fifty thousand. So for this year's tax levy, the mayor is recommending that we maintain our current tax rate, which is a dollar thirty-four nine nine. We'll talk a little bit about the details, but we levy taxes for four different purposes. So we levy taxes for police pension, fire pension, for the library's operations. And for corporate purposes, which is the the remaining part that goes into the general fund to pay for services like police protection. So the library tax levy is important because the library is very dependent on property. the library is very dependent on property tax revenue. It's the vast majority of their of their revenue. So the proposed levy for the library is 3.515 million, and that's based on the budget that city council reviewed for FY twenty one, the current year, that's the amount of revenue they need to make that budget work. So that's an increase of about one percent from the current tax levy. That sounds low, but they had a relatively large jump jump last year, and they had some one time expenses in last year's budget. So so this is the number that makes their budget work. Police and fire pensions will total together about about 3.3 million. And that funding is based on the funding policy that was approved by the city council in May of twenty eighteen. So our funding goal is to fully fund those pen, is to get 100% funded within 20 years. We are in the midst of a five year transition plan to get us on that path. And this is the third year of the five year transition plan. So this is a $413,000 increase from the twenty nineteen tax levy. That's a large increase, but again, we're we're ramping up to get on that 100% funding path. And we'd expect to have one or two more years of fairly large increases, and then the increases should kind of level out. The corporate levy is basically going to the general fund, it's whatever's left after we deal with those other portions of the levy. And we adjust that downward generally to maintain that stable tax rate. So based on maintaining the same tax rate, that is going to decrease about 280,000 or sixteen percent. And that's consistent with the financial forecast. We knew that was coming because of the increases in pension funding. So here's just looking at time at the tax levy and the different components. I'm looking at what we're proposing, the libraries down here in purple, the pensions up here, kind of a similar amount in green. And then the corporate tax levy, the general from general fund part up here, which, as you can see, has been getting smaller. Well, since about twenty sixteen. So in order to complete the tax levy process, we will ask you to adopt the estimated levy next week. We do not expect that we will be required to hold a public hearing because the increase will be less than five percent. However, we always welcome public input. And citizens may comment at that meeting or at later, the later meeting when we approve the tax levy. We would bring the final tax levy to council on December fourteenth. You would see the tax levy ordinance and abatement ordinance to to abate the bonds. And then we would also have a an abatement of the corporate levy to get us to that targeted tax rate of the $134.99. So if we we overshoot because we're estimating assessed valuation, that's that's where would we would reduce the tax levy. So that's the short version of tax levy, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, so does anybody have a question for for Elizabeth concerning this? I've got one, Elizabeth. Obviously, the diagram you showed us, I guess I could mention two things. One, the library does not have the power to levy its own property tax. There, I don't I don't know if that would ever be an agreement that whoever be reached among the corporate the entities that that collect the property tax. I don't know if that discussion has ever occurred. But the city supports the library through property taxes, but not, the library doesn't do it directly. We see that the 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 burden of the pension fund continues to grow. Will there be a time in the future where it begins to stabilize or shrink, or will the pension always grow in this community?
Well, always is a long time, but as as I said, we're in this five year transition period to increase our funding. So what what we do know is that if we don't somewhat aggressively fund our pensions in the long term, it'll it will cost us more because our unfunded liability will grow and grow and grow. And essentially, we're paying interest on the the amount that we didn't pay earlier. So, you know, we had a lengthy discussion about this in twenty eighteen, and we adopted a new policy that includes this more aggressive funding approach. So I would expect, so in the five year transition plan, and this is year three, we should, we'll see another pretty healthy increase in year four. We're completely expecting that. Year five is kind of our flexibility because it's it's sort of a moving target where we might have, we might or might not have another fairly large increase. And then after that, the increase, there should, it's gonna increase every year, but it should stabilize somewhat.
Is it ever based on the number of officers that we or or firemen that we maintain in the community?
Sure, um, so each year we have an actuary who who does an actuarial report for each of those funds. And it's based on, you know, the 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 number of police officers and firefighters, what we expect the wage increases to be. It's 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 pretty complicated. They even have, you know, tables for, you know, how many people do we expect to be disabled? And at what age, when do we expect people to die? They have mortality tables that go into those calculations. What do we expect our investment returns on the pension fund assets to be? So all of all of those things, you know, go into that that calculation to help us determine what the funding needs to be.
So a lot of these, that a lot of these obligations are extremely long term for us, as long as a policeman is serving or collecting a pension following a retirement. You know, we have, I can't remember how many officers we have on hand. I think it's what fifty nine or something like that, officers?
That's that sounds roughly right, it's in the fifties, I believe.
The fifties, yeah, okay.
Fifty eight.
Fifty eight, and then, of course, whatever term of term of of retirement that they serve until they they pass is we're obligated to fulfill that pension.
Correct, now the legislature did some years back implement a tier two. So so I I'm forgetting the exact date that the transition happened, but all the officer officers hired prior to to a certain date received, I would say a better benefit package than officers hired after that date. And officers, her officers currently being being hired have to work longer and that, you know, the pension benefits are a little a little different.
Okay, thanks. Other questions, other questions, Sharice, then Bill.
Have we, has the city ever paid 100% pensions before?
So it's not that we're we're paying 100% of the pensions. It's that we're working on a goal to have it 100% funded within 20 years. The reality is, as even as we get closer and closer to 100% funded, and you you should see that gap start to close, we should go from where we are now, which is, I don't know. Well, it varies by fund, but you know, seventies to eighty eighty percent. You'll see that gap get smaller, so you know, at some point, it's gonna be eighty five and ninety and ninety five. But but because it, the contributions are recalculated every year, and there's so many things, so many factors in play. You know, we may never be exactly 100%. You know, we may be, there may be some years when we're a little better than 100%. There may be some years when we're a little lower, but but yes, it's, I mean, I think it's achievable.
No, I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm asking the wrong question. What we pay into the pensions now is more than what we've paid before? I guess it's.
So yet, so yes and no. At one time, prior to about twenty fifteen, we were funding at funding it based on 100% funded over 20 years. And then then I want to say around twenty fifteen, the mayor at that time made a decision to decrease funding for the pensions in order to to direct resources elsewhere in the budget. The budget was was very tight at that time. But when we came back later and and took a thorough look at what the long term implications and cost of doing that were, we we sat down in twenty eighteen and we we did a presentation on that to the council. And I also, at that time, I had an actuary with me there to to talk about some of the details, and the council adopted the current funding policy in twenty eighteen, in May of twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, I guess.
You had a question.
Bill Brown. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, just to kind of summarize the bottom line, I guess. We levy a dollar amount of eight point three million, eight point four million. And that's based on an estimate of the EAV, and if that EAV estimate comes in, as we expect, we won't get that amount, we'll get about eight point two million because it'll be abated to our current tax rate, so the tax rate won't go up. So does that, so that sounds like other taxing bodies in Urbana that like the park district that are constrained by tax caps can expect about a two percent increase, is that about right?
Yeah, I so I I'm not really familiar with tax caps because we're not constrained by tax caps. But I believe that it's limited to either five percent or the current rate of inflation, whichever is lower, and the rate of inflation is around two percent.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so the EAV went up by a couple percent, it looks like.
Yeah, you you know, and that's hard because we're estimating that's not finalized at this point. But as you said, if if that would, if that levy amount would result in a tax rate that's higher than our desired $134.99, then what would happen is the county clerk would calculate for us what the reduction needs to be to maintain that tax rate, and that would come out of the corporate levy, the part that goes to the general fund.
Okay. Thanks.
Do we have a desire to have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll move resolution number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero five nine R, a resolution estimating the tax levy for fiscal year twenty 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 one, be sent to full council with recommendation for approval.
Okay, thank you, Jared.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bill. Is there, are there any questions or discussion from council? All right, I don't see any further, so I asked the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, and then that that motion, I assume, is to send it to to city council with approval. So. All right, so that's fine, we'll go next to the next item on the agenda. So resolution twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six zero R. A resolution accepting a grant from the Lumpkin Family Foundation to study street trees and plant street trees. And we have Scott Test from our Public Works Department, he's our Sustainability and Resiliency Officer. Do you want to make a presentation on this?
Sure, I'll I'll just mention briefly that I'm very happy to report that we received an award from the Lumpkin Family Foundation to study the distribution of our street trees and our vacant tree sites and to also study any interactions or correlations to that distribution with race and income. Also very pleased that Lumpkin also funded some remedial tree planting that we would do through contract. So when we get to that point where we're gonna be zeroing in on where to do remedial tree planting in the right of way, our Arbor crews will continue on their normal workload and will be able to pay a vendor to do some additional street tree planting. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Does anyone on council have a question or comment, Bill Brown?
Um, yeah, thanks, Scott. Do you know about how many trees, $25,000 would fund?
Yeah, we think about fifty.
Fifty trees. And then how do we usually prioritize where we would put trees?
So there's a couple of different pathways. You know, typically, when a tree is removed, an existing street tree, it gets put on a replanting list. Now, there's, you know, a backlog that could take a year, two or three. But but it gets put on a replanting list. There's also a co op program that the Arbor Division runs. And so that allows folks to actually pay the full cost of the tree planting, of of buying a tree, and then the city will plant it. So that's another, you know, list to get on. So, you know, those are the types of policies that, once we do the study, we're gonna reevaluate and and just see if they make sense.
Okay, so if if somebody wants to pay for the tree, that consumes staff time, do they cover the cost of the staff time or only the cost of the tree?
I I believe it's just the cost of the tree.
Okay, that might be worth reconsidering because then, you know, staff time's not equally spread between low income areas and areas that can afford to buy to to fund their own tree replantings. As far as the the work, so the planning will be planting would be a vendor, and it looks like also the spatial analysis would be contracted out. Correct, seems like that could be, I'm kind of familiar with some of the data that would be used, the it looks, I'm pretty sure most of it's available public domain except for the tree sites themselves. So it seems like it'd be kind of ideally suited for a potential grad student project to be when we, will we do like a regular RFP for that? And would we reach out to departments at the OVI to to work on that?
So one of the things we want to do with the, you know, the the results and and the data that we produce is we want to put it on a on a public web, a publicly accessible website in a way that's easy to view. And the city already has a really wonderful resource through a vendor called Davy Treekeeper. We have, we we have an internal facing Davy Treekeeper view, which the Arbor Division uses to to manage their work and to manage our tree inventory. That same inventory has a public facing view, and everybody can find it. The URL is urbana dot mytreekeeper dot com. And it's a, it's a really wonderful view, it's it's kind of a, kind of like a Google map. But there are layers of data that the public user can turn on and off. And so one of our our intentions is to, whatever our results are, to put them on that publicly accessible portal. And so we want to use that that same vendor so that that all flows in.
So that vendor would also do the spatial analysis?
Yes, they are very experienced with doing canopy analysis, urban heat analysis. And I think what we're doing, we're actually gonna be stretching them, and and they're gonna be doing some additional things because we want to overlay all of that with with some demographic data.
Okay, and then there was a question during public input about the extra amounts for staff. Is that an in kind contribution by the city?
Correct, that that's just, that's just staff time, you know, staff time, it's already budgeted.
And that's not covered by the grant, that's just staff time that is going to be allocated to this project, basically.
Exactly.
Okay, okay, I think that's all I had for now, thanks.
Sharice, and then Mary Alice, do you want to also ask a question?
No.
Bill asked my question.
All right, thank you, Sharice.
Um, I guess my question that I have because I think about my ward and what I was thinking about in turn, it was in terms of you, you're talking about racial study. Could you be more specific about that?
Yeah, we're we're gonna be looking at like census type data, so census blocks. We're actually contemplating, and I'm happy to take any feedback. We're contemplating looking at two different ways of 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 overlaying race and income data. One is called community development target areas. So this is, I believe this is focused on income. These are areas where the city has taken census data for low income. And they've removed some things like, well, that's low income because it's all student housing, and they're not exactly low income. They just don't report any income because they're students. So they've fine tuned census data to really get at what is truly low income neighborhoods in the city. So CDT A, Community Development Target Areas, that's one. So C D T A, Community Development Target Areas, that's one layer. There is a different layer that we may also look at, which is the recently developed Illinois Solar for All Environmental Justice Zones. These were a formula that was developed through rulemaking when the state passed in special incentives for look for environmental justice areas, low income, higher racial minority. So we want to see if we want to look, we want to do the analysis for both of these. If we can get all of that in the scope for the amount of money that we've been awarded. And and just as two different ways to kind of look at the same type of issue. So that that's where we're going with it right now. And I'm happy to take any feedback on that.
Okay, because because the other issue that I was thinking was in terms of because we have a lot of street trees in in my neighborhood. But the other issue that we have that we can or could tend to have. And I'll I'll speak for just where my area is, where where my mom's parcel is. In that we've got three city trees that in impinge upon our 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 lot. That could possibly also mess with the sewage and the pipe, the piping, you know, because of the roots and how they go through. So are you taking those types of things in consideration as well? Because that that's just like another expense. It's something like what Bill was saying when he said, you know, people who can't afford to just have their, to put a tree. You know, it put a tree where they want. Well, the other opposite side of that is as much as as much as a tree will grow up and provide shade and 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 nice little, you know, critters all over the place. There's also the issue of infrastructure damage on the the adjacent lot. So are you thinking in term, are you thinking in terms of that as well? Because many folks can't just afford also to just have. You know, if their roots are in the roots of a tree or impinging on their their property and messing with the infrastructure of their of their homes. They can't necessarily afford to to pay for that either.
Well, I'm very familiar with that issue. I just spent a hundred and twenty five dollars on a sewer company for that very issue. And 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 he believes that my street tree is directly over where the the sewer line connects with the city line. I I don't. So that's, if I remember correctly, the the sewer line from the house to the street is private property. And so I don't know that we have those in our in our databases. I don't know that we have those mapped. So I'm not sure we would be able to, but I'll double check on that to make sure that that's the case.
Well, I'm just saying it's something to think about in also regarding, you know, where trees might be be put. When you when you're deciding to put that is that, you know, it are you in a an area that may be socio economically medium to low to medium? And when those trees grow, don't forget that their roots grow out all over the property, the property owners, and that could possibly cause later issues. And, you know, and people may not be able to actually afford that kind of damage. For that to be repaired. So it's just something that I I'm hoping that you also think about that.
Well, I think that's great feedback. And I don't know if that's some, you know, something that the tree planting crews, the Arbor Crew investigates when when they're, you know, doing new plantings. But I'm going to investigate that with with the crew and see what their current practice is. But that's good feedback. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
That the only thing that might come into play in that is is to study the the root growth pattern of various trees you might select to plant. And some trees probably have more of a taproot. Some trees obviously will spread at the surface a lot more. I don't know which is more preferable, but there you go. Is there any other questions for Scott? Is there a motion then? To move this resolution? Mary Alice Wu.
I'll move to City Council for Recommendation for Approval Resolution Number twenty twenty eleven zero six R. A resolution accepting a grant for the Lumpkin Family Foundation to study street trees and plant street trees.
I'll second.
And Bill seconds it. Bill Brown? Other comments or questions for staff or each other? Okay, seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, that passes and goes forward to the City Council. All right, next is ordinance number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six five. An ordinance amending the Urbana zoning court map. The Urbana zoning map relating to seven oh two, seven oh four, seven oh six, seven oh eight, West High Street and three oh nine South Kohler Avenue. This is coming to us as planning case number twenty four ten dash M dash twenty from Community Development. And who will do a presentation for us?
I will. Hi. Yes, Cat.
Okay, thank you.
This is a request to rezone five parcels from R three, single and two family residential to R five, medium high density, multi-family residential. The parcels are located at the corner of West High Street and South Kohler Avenue, one block east of Lincoln Avenue. They contain single family homes and one home that has been converted into apartments. And there are no plans to develop the or redevelop the site at this time. This is a future land use map. The comprehensive plan identifies these parcels as residential, described as containing primarily single family residential housing, but may also include a variety of compatible uses. Such as suplexes, townhomes, civic uses, institutional uses, and parks where they may be appropriate. For reasons outlined in the staff memo, the Plan Commission has found that the request does not meet the rezoning criteria. And City Council has the option to approve the ordinance to rezone the parcels or deny the ordinance. The Plan Commission voted unanimously to recommend denial and staff concurs. And the applicants have joined the meeting if you have any questions for them, and I can answer any technical questions for staff.
All right, so we're seeing the the map of where this property is located. And it's a zoning map indicating high density and R two as well. Does does the council members have a question for Kate Cat or for the property owners? This this proposal comes to us with a very significant public input coming from out of the Planning Commission. Do you want to summarize that at all, Cat? Read in all attended Planning Commission meeting?
Sure. So we received about twenty to twenty five letters. All were in opposition to the rezoning request. At the public hearing, I believe, four or five members of the public spoke largely in opposition to the request. Two members of the public spoke neither in favor nor in opposition to the request.
Yeah. So any comments, any direction from City Council? We could ask the property owners to speak if they wished.
Are they here? They are, and I've asked Jason to let them in.
Okay. All right, James DeRoeve?
Me? Yes, thank you. Yes, sir. My son and I have owned these properties for a number of years now. And we are contiguous to high density properties on all sides. There's a unit on Green Street with has twenty five units in it. As noted by one of the commission members, the seven and eight hundred blocks of the state streets area or the West Urbana Neighborhood Association area is basically all student housing. Although they're zoned as single family. There are no owner occupied, single family homes there, basically, just one or two. And you've just opened up Green Street. To what end? If you're not going to allow people to make use of that street in a sense. Preservation can have some ugly unintended consequences. What's being preserved here? This is mostly a homogeneous white upper middle class community of West Urbana. And that people of color have been denied access to access to for generations. And I've personally seen deed restrictions in this area that memorialize forever in the public record that prohibit people of color to own homes there. So over time, these restrictions were outlawed. But the backdrop of this circumstance that these homes were born from does not merely fade away. And the lack of access and blatant racism got built into the character of this neighborhood over generations. You cannot decouple this inequity from the character. Think about this as you consider what you've been working so long and hard to protect. Higher density gives more opportunity for diversity of race, income, and age in this neighborhood where it's needed most. So let's stop talking about encroachment and start talking about inclusion. What else is being preserved? Certainly not Mother Earth. Old, single family homes are energy hogs. They are leaky and toxic. Transportation and buildings are the two biggest offenders of greenhouse gas emissions. We know that by adding density in close proximity to public transportation hubs, town centers, hospitals, and universities, you can feed two birds with one seed. You're able to build energy efficient structures that house more people in closer proximity, which equals less resource demand. At the same time, you're putting more people closer to the workplace, transit, and services, which saves on vehicle miles traveled. I presume that's why we did Green Street. What was the point otherwise? So the last thing I think this neighborhood needs is to stay stuck in the past. You know, let's build community. Let's build diversity. Let's build equity. Let's build efficiency. Let's build density where this city needs it the most. Let's build a future. The backlash that I've received personally on this, I find discomfiting. I've been a lifelong preservationist. I own five or six homes in the state streets area that are all a hundred years old or older. I've invested hundreds, if not millions of dollars between taxes and purchase prices of these in the city of Urbana. I maintain those. I own a building in Champaign. It's an old schoolhouse. I'm not against preservation. I live preservation. I live in a hundred year old house myself. The most modern building I live in is my office, and it's sixty or seventy years old. There comes a point when and and this may be a futile gesture, but I I believe in going through the process. And hopefully, my voice can be heard. As this council decides, what is the future of this neighborhood? Which direction is it going to go as we go through new planning processes, new comprehensive zoning? Or whatever that is that they're talking about? I wonder how many people of color were on the last one of these commissions that put this project or these zoning restrictions together? How many? There are none. I can think of no black owner occupied, single family homes in the state streets area. There may be one or two. But I've been in that neighborhood for forty years now. And I walk around and I look and see who lives there, and I'm not seeing it. You can put all the Black Lives Matter signs out you want in the front yard. But until you start bringing people in that can live there and make it hospitable to them. I don't know. It's it seemed like a lot of talk to me. So I hope you do consider this in the vein in which it was presented. I don't have any plans for these properties, nor does my son at this point in time. I'm seventy one years old. Probably the last thing I want to do in my life is develop something. I'd like to kick back and retire. So it's more of a, what's what about my future? What do I leave to my grandchildren? I'd like to leave them a nice piece of property, if possible. And that's that's kind of what the basis of this is. But I don't see that it's incompatible with the neighborhood as it stands. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration. I know it's hard under these circumstances and these times to do what you're doing. And you've got a lot on your table. So thank you for consideration.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your input. So a discussion then? Yes, Mary Alice Wu.
I'd like to just make a motion so we can have a discussion, if that's all right.
Certainly, you may.
I'd like to make a motion that we deny ordinance number twenty twenty eleven zero six five and ordinance amending there being a zoning map, seven oh two, seven oh four, seven oh six, seven oh eight, West High Street and three oh nine South Kohler Street. Plan case number twenty four ten M twenty.
All right, Mary Alice Wu makes the motion.
I'll second.
Charisse Hershey? Second. Okay, let's discuss now. Mary Alice Wu.
So I'm sure everybody knows I'm the representative for Ward one. These four properties, one, two, three, four, sorry, five properties are in Ward two, which is currently vacant. I I do want to speak for a little bit about some of the plans. So right now we are talking about doing a comprehensive plan. The existing comprehensive plan that we have clearly delineates the eight hundred and the seven hundred blocks of the state streets. The eight hundred blocks from South Illinois to Pennsylvania are in the Lincoln B C corridor. And there was a very clear plan in terms of what the comprehensive group thought would be best in those cases. It doesn't go up to Green Street. But the clear line there was B C Street. And so our two single family houses was going to be on the east side of B C Street. I have spoken to some landlords who actually own properties right across the street from these. They do not want to see this rezoned into a higher density. They like the fact that the neighborhood has less density the farther south that you go. It recruits people who want a quieter community. I live on the eight hundred block, and I have a neighbor who is African American, single single family residence right across the street from me. Not to say that the West Urbana Neighborhood couldn't have better diversity, more people within the single family households from all different kinds of groups. It is true that this is a student area, but it is a mixture of student and single family residences. So I I don't think now is the time that we should consider reclassifying these parcels when we are just now discussing what the new comprehensive plan is going to be. And the existing comprehensive plan that we have on the books right now clearly states that this is not a high density. So those are those are my initial thoughts. I will say that there's been a lot of conversation amongst the neighbors in that area who are vehemently against the rezoning of these properties. But I felt like I had to put a little bit more out there just because we don't have a representative for Ward two.
Appreciate that. Other commentary? Yeah, Charisse.
Since he brought it up, I feel compelled to say something regarding the diversity of the housing. And I'm aware also of the history of the lack of diversity south of University Avenue. I'd like to know how many African Americans he has living in his properties.
So I guess that's a question for James.
At any one time, I would say they're all students. Ten to fifteen percent, sometimes none, sometimes more. I've been I've been doing this for my whole life. So I I can't narrow. I have I have students from all over the world. I prefer grad students because they tend to stay there longer and they're a little better behaved. But most of the undergrads are in student housing, at least till their juniors or seniors before I ever get to see them.
So your properties.
I have a property at 402 West Elm in Urbana, which I believe to be the oldest single family residence in the city of Urbana. And a number of years ago, the city had a program where they would loan you X amount of dollars if you would agree to participate in in low income housing, which I did, and I borrowed the money and I still owe the money. It's paid back whenever I sell the property, but I've owned it for 40 years. And in any number of different times, I've had low income families living there.
Do you, are you saying, are you? Okay. All right.
All right.
But you know, it doesn't make any difference to me.
How many African Americans have you had living in those properties?
I'm sorry, Ms.
I said, the properties that you're talking about rezoning? What's your diversity in those properties?
Well, my son owns two or three of those properties, so I can't speak for him. I don't know who he had in those properties. The two that are mine, one I just bought last year, and I don't know who's living there. My son, my other son rented rented it out for me and I don't know who the tenant is. The other one is, I believe that's at 702, and he did the rental there also, but it's typically been women that have lived there. It just seems one stays and gets two or three others to come in and then they graduate and it kind of rolls over. So I don't know. I'll find out for you.
Okay.
But I mean, I don't ask that on my applications. I don't ask, you know, the only way I would know is if if I went there and
It was just that you that you brought up the fact that historically there there has been very few black folks that have lived in that neighborhood and
Right.
I I'm I'm highly aware of that. But
I just hoping that this next go around, and I I'm not kidding myself, I don't think you guys are going to pass this. But the next go around, when when these things are looked at, that people of color are included in the process of deciding, hey, where do we need more housing? How do we get more housing there? How do we get diversity in this neighborhood? How do we provide that access? Speak for themselves. The numbers speak for themselves, I think.
Yeah, is there one might wonder whether there's a difference between diversity and rental properties as opposed to people who are owners of properties in this area? Were these are all
I would think there is more properties just because of the dollars and cents involved. You know, if I can rent a room for $300 a month to $500 a month, that's a lot different than having to pay a mortgage of 1,500 to 2,500 is $3,000 to $4,000 a month. And the taxes and the things that go with that. So the dollars and cents drive that.
Other questions? Mary Alice Wu.
I don't really have a question. I just have more of a statement, which is out of all of the new properties that I've seen developed in that whole area, I know that the starting rates are $750 per bedroom. So for a two bedroom, that's $1,500 for an apartment. For a four bedroom, that's going to be $3,000 for an apartment. So I'm not entirely sure if that property would be redeveloped if what the clientele that it would draw most likely would be university students. Not to say that's bad or anything, but it would be more of the same. That's already in that neighborhood is my point.
Well, either that or young university professors or assistant professors or or staff. There's a lot of other people around there that that maybe they're close to the university but don't have an affiliation with it. Maybe they want to work downtown Urbana as as that gets redeveloped. Again, I I come back to this Green Street corridor. Why did we do that if we're not going to let you know, people live around it and utilize it? So, don't know.
Okay. Other comments, questions? All right. All right. So I guess I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on this one.
Yes, can I just clarify something?
You can.
So this is a motion to deny. So if it's yes, then you're saying it's kind of the the opposite, right? So I just wanted people to be clear in terms of what a yes, no means for this one.
Yeah, so a vote to support the denial would be a yes vote. Phil Brown.
Yeah, I'll just comment that I, you know, some of these arguments are probably good arguments to make during the next comprehensive plan overhaul or current plan. Is pretty clear about this being R3 and that's supposed to be sort of a buffer between the MRR district on Green Street and the R2 to the south. So you know, duplexes are allowed. I guess you could get two four bedroom duplexes on some of those lots. One of them looks pretty small. I don't know if you could get two four bedroom duplexes on that, but there's some allowance for increased density duplexes or townhomes, something like that. You could also combine those and do a planned development. I think, you know, there's some options there, but going to R5, definitely I don't see being supported by the comprehensive plan as it is.
Okay, I guess Phyllis.
Okay, are we ready?
Apparently we are.
Okay, now the motion that Mary Alice made and Charisse seconded, that was for this particular thing and not just for the fact that you were talking about denying this. Am I correct? So when I call the roll this time, it's going to be to deny it completely?
Is that correct, Mary Alice?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Right. So that doesn't go anywhere then. All right, and we'll probably revisit the developments and the zoning of Benny districts near the university as the comprehensive plan is, the new comprehensive plan is created in the coming year. All right. Then the next item of business is ordinance number 2020-11-066, an ordinance approving a right of way license agreement with Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District. Okay, Justin, are you going to present this one for us?
Yeah, and I don't have much of a presentation, but this ordinance would approve a license agreement between the city of Urbana and the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District for the installation and operation of an underground electric transmission line connecting proposed solar power plant to a hydrogen fueling station at the on the current MTD campus. So as exciting as the the solar farm and the hydrogen station might be, this this is specifically addressing the the power, the underground power transmission line. So that would run along Green Street, which is a short stretch of road north of University Avenue. It stopped, license agreement stops at University Avenue because that's actually I dot right of one. And they'll have to get a separate license agreement with I dot for that portion of it. And then this this type of agreement is actually typically just approved with by executive authority by the mayor because it's all underground utility. And we've reviewed and approved this in public works. However, since this agreement is with the MTD, it's technically an intergovernmental agreement and requires city council approval. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Other questions? Mary Alice.
I'm always curious how you come up with the rental fee, the annual fee of $967.20.
Yeah, there is a linear foot fee in the fee schedule for license agreements for the right of way. So so there's a number that it's actually adjusted each year and the license agreement allows us for or allows for us to adjust it each year to match the consumer price index. So so the applicant gave us their number. So just the measurement of the length of their underground utility.
So you just plug it into a formula? Okay.
Could you explain, Justin, how it is that the MTD department owns a piece of property in what is right next to, I guess, a Mosacote or maybe it's not a Mosacote, it's the, it's our, is it our Landscape Development Center? It's not that either, is it?
The the location of the solar farm is actually on Urbana-Champaign sanitary district property.
Yeah.
So I believe that there's a separate agreement set up between the two agencies for the use of that land as a solar farm.
Okay, so and what about the hydrogen collection or storage unit tank or whatever it's going to be? But can you explain that part?
Yeah, there's a, I don't know too many details of it, other than MTD is is working on getting some hydrogen fuel buses and and has submitted plans to the city for for site planned or site development for the addition of a hydrogen fueling station to fuel those buses. So
So there'll be some storage there.
Yeah, yeah. I'm I'm not, I haven't looked at those plans in a while. MTD would have to to describe that whole, their whole setup there and what's proposed, but I believe there'd be some fuel storage onsite.
Okay. Phil Brown.
I'll move to send ordinance number 2020-11-066 to City Council with recommendation for approval.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Will Colbert? Colbert? Okay. Other discussion? Okay, I guess. Yeah, Charisse.
Maybe it's just the word hydrogen that got my attention.
Yeah.
Hydrogen storage, which definitely got my attention.
Mine as well, but
What are the safety standards regarding that? How is that going to be? I guess that's what I worry about. Is this, is this like underground, like the gasoline stations have have underground tanks? Is this, is this how after we vote for this? If approving it, if is, how how are they exactly going to store this hydrogen and what are the where are the safety factors?
So I guess first I'll point out that this this agreement is specific to just the underground power transmission line. So it really, it's power fueling the hydrogen station that would otherwise just come from the Ameren Power Grid. So so that that's that agreement to your question about state building safety division and and the fire department too on the safety measures that are put in place, but included in that site planner do our building safety plans and and fire hazard plans and things like that. So there are standards in place to protect against.
Okay. Okay.
Guess we'll discover that in the future.
Yeah.
All right, other comments or questions? I guess we could have the roll called from the city clerk.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes and we'll go forward to the city council. The next item is ordinance number 2020-11-067. An ordinance approving, oh, we just did that one, is 2020-11-067, yes, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class R and T-1 liquor licenses for Baldurata's Porketta and Sicilian Sausage at 300 South Broadway Avenue, Urbana, Illinois, in Lincoln Square Mall. Mayor, is that something that as Liquor Commissioner, you would like to comment on?
It absolutely is. So Baldurata's has requested an R and T1 license, restaurant and tavern license. They're located in Lincoln Square. They currently sell sandwiches. They do not have a liquor license. They want to expand their business into another part of the food court and offer beer, wine, mixed specialty drinks and desserts. And this is a license that will allow them to do that.
Okay. Other questions for the mayor? Yes. Jared Miller.
Not a question, but I'll make a motion if Jared entertain it.
Yep, I certainly will.
Move ordinance number 2020-11-067, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class R and T1 liquor licenses for Baldurata's Porketta and Sicilian Sausage at 300 South Broadway Avenue forward to full council with recommendation for approval.
And I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Mary Alice. Any conversation? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, that passes and it goes forward to the city council. The last item on our agenda is in a 2019 I dot traffic stop presentation and 2021 pilot program. Brian Seraphin, are you going to be, oh, the mayor wants to speak. Okay, go ahead. She raised her hand.
I just want to introduce this and I'll turn it over to Chief Seraphin and Melissa Hendrian. I just wanted to let folks know this is really a two part presentation. The first is the presentation on the statistics from the 2019 traffic stop report. The second is the Urbana Police Department's proposal for really radically changing their approach to traffic stops. My goal, as I told Chief Seraphin, was to eliminate racial disparities in traffic stops. And he has worked with his his staff, his team of officers and staff, and they have come up with a proposal that I think will get us very close to that, if not achieve that goal. So I'm really happy to 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 introduce this and I'm looking forward to hearing the report. And really, the most important part of this presentation is the second part, but take it away, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And you've already tried to cut to the chase a little bit, but let me start by mayor, council, citizens, officers, whoever happens to be watching this. I just want to say thank you for your patience, first of all. Normally this comes out in spring, early summer, and 2020 has been a bit of a challenge for us on a variety of fronts. So I thank people for their patience. You know, we have been, as you've read through the materials in 2003, when this legislation initially passed, that for 16 or 17 years now, we've been reviewing traffic stops. I have had an opportunity to talk with others from around the state and Urbana has clearly, they clearly go above and beyond what we've done here as far as studying this information. The, tonight, Melissa Hendrian, the crime analyst, is going to sort of present her report, work through the slides and we'll we'll answer some questions and whatnot. Then as we move forward, I want to make sure that we get a chance to spend a little time in what the proposal is for 2021 as we as we try to move forward. So at any rate, those are, I just wanted to make a couple of quick remarks. And now I will hand it over to Melissa, who Jason probably has to have some sharing capabilities of some sort granted her, please, sir.
She should be good to go.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen.
Thank you. I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, so the report was included in your packet, so this will just be going over kind of the highlights of what happened in twenty nineteen. This does not include any of the data from twenty twenty. The data is an anomaly. We, you know, we stopped discontinued essentially traffic stops starting in March. And it's it's been different from what we have done in the past. So this report is only including twenty nineteen data. Okay, so we'll go through the sections, the contents that were included in the report. So we'll go over the, you know, generally the number of stops that Urbana Police conducts. We'll talk about benchmarks disparity ratio, the decision that an officer makes to stop a car. And we can break down the disparity ratios into step stops and non step stops. I'll consider a new analysis that we did in twenty nineteen, the veil of darkness. We'll also look at the outcomes of stops, looking at citations versus warnings, and then more serious things that can occur that began as a traffic stop. And then I'll turn it over to Chief Seraphin to talk about our pilot traffic stop plan for next year. So the Urbana Police Department, on average, conducts about twenty five hundred traffic stops every year. This varies year to year due to different staffing patterns and, you know, how many our overtime budget for step details. And so this this number has a fair amount of variation over the years. In twenty nineteen, we conducted three thousand two hundred and forty five traffic stops. So to tell whether numbers where whether our twenty nineteen numbers are outside of what we would expect based on our our range in the past, we compare generally a five year average to twenty nineteen, and we look at the standard deviation. And so what that does is it takes the average and it compares it to kind of the spread year to year. So our our twenty nineteen numbers were, you know, thirty two, forty five, and we're comparing it to the average of thirty five hundred. So is that different enough that we want to pay attention to it? Our standard deviation was four hundred and four, so it's thirty five, thirty seven, plus or minus four hundred and four. And so our numbers for twenty nineteen fell within that range. So based on what we've done in the past, that number falls within that our our Z score, which is our kind of our indicator, if that is less than one or greater than one or less than negative one, greater than positive one, then that falls outside kind of what we would expect. And we want to look at that a little bit, a little bit closer. This does not. So this is within our expected range based on the variation that we've seen in the past from our from our numbers. And we'll we'll talk, we'll do more Z scores later, but it's helpful to start with kind of a basic one. Okay, so this is the demographics of the drivers that we've stopped in Urbana during traffic stops. This is a number that we know. And then we will talk in just a minute on how to compare it to kind of our baseline or our benchmark of drivers on Urbana City Streets. But we'll talk first about kind of what the what our breakdown has been of stopped drivers over the past, looking at here back to twenty ten. And so you can see that of of the total number of stops that we've done, our our black driving, our black drivers that we've stopped in twenty ten made up about thirty eight percent. In twenty eleven, that was thirty four percent. In twenty twelve, that was about thirty percent. And then from twenty twelve all the way through twenty eighteen, it was around thirty percent. So there's not much variation here in, you know, looking at the past five years. In twenty nineteen, that number was thirty three point six two percent. Asian drivers made up anywhere from about eight percent all the way up to eleven percent. In twenty nineteen, that number was eight, right around eight percent. Hispanic drivers make up about five percent of the percentage of drivers that we stop in Urbana. And then white drivers make up anywhere from forty seven all the way up to fifty seven percent. This number has quite a bit more variation. So we'll talk more about, you know, I said we'd come back to the Z scores. And here we are in twenty nineteen, our percentage of black drivers that we stopped thirty four percent compared to our five year average of twenty nine percent. Our standard deviation, so we're looking at kind of our our range of the past five years, our measure of whether whether this is something that stands out. It's two point four eight percent. So this is significantly, it is a significant change from the variation that we had seen in the past. We stopped fewer Asian drivers, and that is a notable difference. We stopped more Hispanic drivers as a notable difference as well and stopped fewer white drivers than what we had done in the past. So it tells you that all of our numbers in twenty nineteen, our breakdown of races that we we made, drivers that we made stops of was significantly different than what we had seen compared to our five year average. So then we calculate the disparity ratio. So what does this mean in terms of, you know, are we? Are we stopping more drivers? So we, you know, we're stopping a higher percentage of drivers. But what would we expect to see based on our driving population? Or the the people that are driving in on Urbana City Streets? So we know the numerator. We know the percentage race of our stop drivers. This is indicated on every traffic citation or warning that we issue. What we don't know is the percentage race of all drivers on Urbana City Streets. This exact number is unknowable. It's not something that we are able to capture with a great deal of certainty. So what people have done in the past is they use proxies. Up through the twenty eighteen I dot report that they put out, they used the breakdown of the the census, the twenty ten census, looking at individuals aged fifteen and up. They changed the methodology quite a bit in twenty nineteen. We can talk about that later if you're interested, but it's it's quite a departure from what they've done in the past. Our, what we have used and what we had decided to use in, I think it was twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen with council is to use the breakdown of race of drivers involved in traffic accidents within the city of Urbana. So this is a better measure of individuals that are driving within our city because about half the drivers that we stop here don't live here. So we have, you know, we've got the university, we've got Carl, we've got, you know, lots of traffic in and out of the city. And so we're not, we're not trying to measure the percentage race of stop drivers compared to the percentage of individuals that live here because that's not an accurate representation of, you know, our of our population on city streets. So we'll break it down for twenty nineteen, thirty three percent of our drivers that we stopped were African American. And then when we look at our accident breakdown, twenty four percent of our drivers in accidents within the city of Urbana were black drivers. So that gives us an overall disparity ratio of one point three eight. What that means is a black driver is thirty eight percent more likely than we would expect based on our estimated driving population to be stopped in a traffic stop in the city of Urbana. So these are are the demographics that I had mentioned previously up through twenty ten or up through twenty eighteen. I dot use the census figures that estimated our population as being about nineteen percent Asian, fourteen, fifteen percent black, five percent Hispanic, and sixty percent white. When we look at the accidents, we use a three year rolling average, and that that number is quite a bit different. So from twenty thirteen to twenty fifteen, we had ten percent of our drivers involved in traffic crashes, both at fault and not at fault. Were ten percent. Black drivers made up about eighteen percent, Hispanic drivers about three and a half percent, and white drivers about sixty seven percent. And that number has changed composition over the years. There is variation year to year. We use the three year rolling average to make sure that we're we're kind of leveling out any of the the big swings. And we're getting a bigger bigger number so that we it kind of levels out some of these irregularities. But from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, this this number for Asian drivers drops down to eight point six percent. For black drivers, it's twenty four point four one percent. Hispanic drivers is at five percent, and then white drivers is just under sixty percent. So when we use that as our denominator, then we calculate our disparity ratio. So we can look at this over time. You'll remember a disparity ratio of one point oh means that the driver is just as likely to be stopped as we would expect based on our driving population. So that is this yellow line here. You can see that there is significant variation by race by year. So starting in, so our purple line here is African American drivers. This is consistently the highest of any race. It is significantly above the yellow line. In twenty ten, a black driver was two or was a hundred and eleven percent more likely than we would expect based on our estimated driving population to be stopped in the city of Urbana for a traffic infraction. That number has decreased over the years, but it is still, you know, we still see significant disparity. In twenty eighteen, it was one point three six. So a black driver was thirty six more likely, thirty six percent more likely to be stopped than we would expect. And then in twenty nineteen, that number was one point three eight. So a black driver was thirty eight percent more likely than we would expect to be stopped based on our estimated driving population. That is in comparison to some of our other racial groups. So you can see that Hispanic drivers have changed over the years. They rep your represent a small percentage of our stops. So a small fluctuation can result in kind of a bigger bigger leaps here. And then our white drivers are consistently underrepresented in our traffic stops. So, you know, starting in twenty ten, a white driver was about thirty percent less likely to be stopped than we would expect based on our estimated driving population. That number was twenty three, twenty three percent less likely than we would expect based on our population in twenty nineteen. So we did an additional analysis this time, and those of you that were around in twenty, I think it was twenty fifteen for the the traffic stop commission report. They did this analysis then, and then I had a U of I stats class redo it in the or they started in January. We had some in person meetings, and then with COVID and the university shutting down, we had some online meetings. But they they set out to replicate this study. So what this does is we're we're shrinking all of our thirty two hundred stops, and we are taking only the stops where we can separate these into is it daylight or is it nighttime? And can it be either day or nighttime based on the time of year? So, you know, if I leave for work at six o'clock in the morning tomorrow, it's going to be dark outside. But if I leave for work at six o'clock in the morning in June, it's going to be bright outside. So that would be a time where it could be either light or dark depending on the time of year, depending on the the date of the year. So this assumes it's controlling strictly for visibility. So what we're doing is we're we're binding it by about four P M. to seven P M. I don't know that they got on the NOAA web, the National Oceanic something website where they could classify every single time, every single stop that we did. You know, whether it was within the bounds and then whether it was a daytime stop or a nighttime stop. We excluded the twilight stops where visibility was a little bit more questionable. But then we, you know, we were able to differentiate stops into, you know, we're controlling for the driving population. This does not have a benchmark. Our, we're assuming that people have the same behavior regardless of the month. So if you come home from work at five P M., you're going to come home from work at five P M., regardless of whether it's January or it's June. If you, you know, take your kids back and forth to school or activities, if you go to the gym, go to the bars, this is assuming that people have kind of the the same general behavior regardless of the time of the year. So this is controlling for officer visibility. So we can if a driver, if an officer is able to discern the race of a driver based on whether there's light outside or not, we would expect to see a different percentage of black drivers stopped during the daytime versus during the nighttime. So results of this analysis indicated that we stopped the same proportion of black drivers during the daytime versus during the nighttime when we're bounded by the by the times of the year. However, there is still a persistent disparity. So the disparity exists both when officers can see and can discern the race of the driver based on the visibility versus when they cannot. So what's going on? Can we can we break this out a little bit further and see if there's there are some answers to these questions? So there is a different, there's a a step program that we do here. Officers are able to sign up for overtime shifts where the only thing that they're doing during those shifts is is running traffic. And then we also have non step stops. So the step stops are in green up here, and the non step are in blue down here. The non step stops are stops that are conducted while an officer is on patrol. So they are on their regular shift. They are conducting traffic stops as they are able or as based on, you know, whether they're responding to calls for service or or what is what is happening during their shift. So about thirty percent of our stops are step stops, and the rest of our stops are conducted while we're on patrol. There is a significant difference in the disparity ratio between step stops and non step stops. And so you can see our purple line is black drivers still consistently above the yellow line until twenty eighteen. And this is when those of you that were around will remember with this presentation that we had with Sylvia, we moved the locations of the step stops to be strategically where we had high volumes of traffic, high volumes of traffic accidents, and high volumes of accidents that had personal injury. So in twenty eighteen, our black drivers in Urbana were fifteen percent less likely than we would expect to be stopped based on our estimated driving population. So this disparity ratio was less than one. A white driver was eleven percent more likely than we would expect to be stopped. And those numbers were very similar in twenty nineteen. There's our break. We see the drop start. Non step stops have a much higher disparity ratio. So these are the stops. These are only the stops that are conducted while officers are on patrol. So you can see in, you know, so it was back in twenty ten, a black driver was a hundred and twenty four percent more likely to be stopped than we would expect based on our driving population. This has decreased over time quite a bit, but we are still looking at a at a persistent disparity. In in twenty eighteen, a black driver was sixty percent more likely than we would expect to be stopped. And in twenty nineteen, that increased slightly to sixty one percent more likely to be stopped than we would expect based on our estimated driving population. So looking at those two together, you can kind of see the the difference here between our our step stops here on the bottom. This is just the disparity ratio for black drivers versus our non step stops on the top. So our patrol stops are here on the top. And this is, this is kind of where this is our, the direction that we're going here. And there was our departure. You can see where where it dropped below the yellow line. So where are we conducting our non step stops? We are conducting, so we're looking at a map here. This is a density map. The blue is citizen initiated calls for service only in twenty nineteen. Purple are our patrol stops of black drivers. So our our traffic stops, our patrol traffic stops of black drivers overlaid with our citizen initiated calls for service. So it appears based on based on this that our our stops of our patrol stops of black drivers are occurring in areas that we are spending more time in. So these drivers have a an increased chance of exposure. So it's not you know, it's 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 the location. So these are geographically correlated. And then the other point to look at racial disparity is that the outcome of the traffic stop. So once we know the race of the driver, is there disparate treatment? So about half the time, if you get stopped in Urbana, you're going to get a ticket. The other half of the time, you're going to get a warning, and then there's a small chunk where it ends in something more serious than a traffic violation. So someone has a revoked license and their car has to be towed from the scene. Or, you know, we find guns or we find drugs or we find something or somebody has a warrant. These things begin as a traffic stop but end as something that that is more serious than that. So we can look at the disparity ratio of our outcomes. This takes the guesswork out. We know the percent race of our of our stop drivers, and we know the percent outcomes by race. So by dividing these, it gives us another disparity ratio, but this takes any of the guesswork out of it. So looking at our citations, an Asian driver in twenty nineteen was eight percent more likely than we would expect based on the percentage of Asian drivers that we stopped to receive a citation. A black driver was fifteen percent less likely, a Hispanic driver was three percent less likely, and a white driver was nine percent more likely than we would expect to receive a citation compared to the the break, the racial breakdown of drivers that we've stopped. Looking at our warnings, an Asian driver was eight percent more likely. A black driver was one percent more likely, Hispanic driver thirty three percent less likely, and a white driver was right even. Or the percentages were the same. More serious than a traffic violation, and I don't have this on here. I believe it's a hundred and seventy four. So this is a small percentage of all of the the traffic stops that we do, but we will include these numbers here. these numbers here. The disparity ratio for Asian drivers is 0.29. So much less likely than we would expect based on the race, based on the percentage, the breakdown of stop drivers. A black driver is 94% more likely to have an outcome of something that's more serious than a traffic violation. Hispanic drivers 33% more likely and a white driver is about 40% less likely. When we dig into these, it is included in the report. It is not included in the slides. Most of these are nondiscretionary. So if someone has a warrant, if someone has a revoked license, this is automatically going to elevate to something. There's not, there's not discretion applied here. Okay, so in summary, in 2019, we had a decrease in the number of traffic stops, though this was not notable. And we decreased our proportion of step stops to overall stops. There was a slight increase of disparity ratio with our black drivers. 34% overall of our stops are with black drivers. But black drivers make up an estimated 24% of the Urbana driving population. So our overall disparity ratio of all stops was 1.38 for black drivers. A veil of darkness analysis revealed no statistical difference in the proportion of black drivers stopped when controlling for officer visibility. Our non-step or patrol stop disparity ratio was higher and it's correlated geographically with our citizen initiated calls for service. That non-step disparity ratio is also higher than our overall disparity ratio. It was 1.64 for black drivers. And then at the decision, at the decision point of the outcome of a stop, a black driver is less likely to receive a citation. And that concludes my portion of the presentation. I can take questions now or we can move it to Bryant first.
Okay, so thank you very much. That's a lot of data.
It is.
It did. You crunched it rather amazingly. Do we have people who would like to ask questions? Yes, Jared Miller? Go ahead.
Melissa, I was wondering if you would be able to respond to some of the points that Durole had brought up in his most recent email to us. Namely, he had asked about considering multiple methods for getting our, our percentages rather than the single, single statistic, because as he says, it is just a single viewpoint. And there are lots of different ways to, to look at them. And he also asked about separating local residency from non-local stops and see if demographics align. Then, I don't know, have you looked, I can keep going on to those. I'm sure you've seen, seen his email. Do you have thoughts about in future analysis, adding any of those things in? And/or his thoughts on, you know, the usefulness of the disparity ratio in general versus just tracking the percentage of folks stopped by race?
And so this was, you know, the, the discussion of the benchmark was something that we, we had come to a, a decision with, within council. We use all drivers involved in traffic accidents. However, I did rerun it today and looked at the not at fault percentage. So that's, that's the argument, right? That a not at fault, you know, when, when there is a, a traffic crash, there is a driver that is determined to be at fault and a driver that is determined to be not at fault. And the argument is that our, that a better way to, to measure, you know, equal distribution of individuals on Urbana city streets is looking just at the not at fault drivers. That drops the, our benchmark percentage for black drivers to a little over 22%. So it is not a very large departure from the numbers that we had run with both at fault and not at fault drivers. It would also be interesting, I think, to look at strictly at fault drivers because that would be, you know, a measure of violation, right, of risky or driving behavior. So I think it's, it's instructive to keep it together, but you know, it's welcome to consider it a part as well. Was there, was there another point that you wanted me to directly respond to? We were able to meet with Mr. Cruz earlier last week. So.
Yeah, yeah. And that's why I think he had, he had sent some of those. I just wanted to make sure that if he had brought those up to you, that you guys were aware of them. Because we don't get to talk to you very often. It's, you know, we, I'd be interested if you could follow up with us on, you know, using multiple perspectives as we track this going forward, you know, and what that, what, what that might look like. And then using, you know, a combination of those, of those statistics to, to give, give ourselves a better picture. In addition to also highlighting and tracking the stops just on, just on race by itself and watching that percentage and how that changes over time as well. Because that is another, another way to look at that. I'm sure many of my other more stat intelligent council members could, could speak more clearly to that. But I just want to make sure that his points have gotten across and that we'll get a follow-up from you on, on those points and about how we can watch those stats going forward. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, Sharice and then Bill.
Yeah, could, could I see the map again where you had the overlay of traffic stops and, and if you could zoom it, blow it up a little bit, because I really couldn't read like where, where any of that was taking place. If you, where you have that overlay and the neighborhood.
Yep.
Stuff. Cause I'm, I'm interested in seeing. Yeah, can you? And me putting my glasses on is not going to make much difference. Okay, since I'm not seeing it all that well, maybe you can tell me the big blob in the middle.
Yeah, so this is to, to orient yourself here. This is Vine, this is University. Got Lincoln, Bradley, Colorado, Florida.
So you get calls, the blue areas going from teal to, to like a sea foam or sea foam to a darker kind of.
Yeah. Contrast is not great.
Oh, no, I love the color structure. These are the areas where you get the most calls?
That is correct.
From citizens?
Yes.
And then the purple going from kind of lavender into a deep dark royal purple. That's, those are accidents or those are?
Those, that is the highest, those are, those are our concentration of our, of our particular stops of interest, which is black drivers that we stop while officers are on patrol.
Oh, okay. So this is when officers are on patrol. And the, so what is the, 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 the lighter purple areas? What do they represent? The little splotches from?
So the little slot, those are just a lighter density. So we, we probably had a few stops at this corner, but not enough for it to be like that, that deep dark purple. So this is kind of like a.
So University of Vine, which turns into Cunningham.
Yeah, so five points. And we would expect this to have a, like, when I, when we look at, this is, we have a lot of accidents here, too. This is a really high, highly traveled road.
And Bradley and Lincoln.
More of a concentration in, in some of these residential neighborhoods, too.
But Bradley and Lincoln, I noticed that's also a high, why is that such, such a high density area?
For calls or for stops?
For stops.
And the officers are able to, to make stops while they're on patrol. And this is, this is an area where there are lots of stops.
Is this the area, are these two areas, those dark purple splotches, we're talking about Bradley and Lincoln, University of Vine, and then there's another dark splotch in the, the north part of the big blue splotch? Yeah, right there.
Yep.
Are those areas where police are sitting and watching? Or are they, are they, are they also, is it, is it, what's the, the call? The, you know, where you get most of the calls versus the, oh, I saw you speeding, getting off of the highway or something like that?
So, so Sharice, Bryant here. We'll go, I'll go into this a little bit more later as, as we try to transition to the next program. Essentially, I, I think what the, what we're, what this is trying to at least illustrate is that a lot of these traffic stops are occurring when officers are on patrol and, and it's where they physically are. So while someone is, if they work in a particular beat or if they're in a particular area and they see somebody roll through a stop sign as they get done handling another call, they might address that particular stop sign violation or, well, I am in my beat, while I'm waiting for the next call, maybe I'll sit and watch this stop sign or watch that, or run radar in this particular area. But it's, it's left to, to, to a degree, a great degree to what the officers are confined or what maybe they've heard from complaints and those things. So it's not necessarily they're called there for that, or that specific question if I, or that specific problem, if I understand your question.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to determine is that, because I guess my theory is basically if you're always looking for the negative, you're surely to find it. So what I'm saying is that if, if, if our police, like, posted at certain areas where there seems to be a high violation area?
No, they are not formally posted there.
Okay.
So.
It's just while they're, while they're patrolling and?
While they're out patrolling or if they know that, hey, Mrs. McGillicuddy is complaining about somebody at the stop sign at this, they might be in that particular area. But no, they're not formally posted there. And then that'll speak to part two of this presentation here in a little bit.
Okay.
Are there other, Bill Brown? Yes.
Um, yeah, thanks, Melissa. It's really great to see all the work you've done, detailed data. I did notice. I mean, one way we can also address the disparity issues is to look at the reasons for the stops and disparities. And like, a couple of years ago, when we started the, the fix-it ticket to try to reduce the equipment violations. Can't tell if that's actually working. I don't know if there's enough of a sample for that, but definitely in 2018, it was higher. I think that was when we had started the program and maybe officers were kind of anxious to give out the, to fix it tickets and might have been making more equipment stops just to give out the fix it coupons, not a ticket. But it's back down to more about normal, it looks like. But the one that stuck out to me was the license and registration violations were way up in 2019. About 20% of black drivers stops were for license and registration violations. And normally it was closer to 10%, maybe 15% the highest year before that. Were you able to drill down at all and try to figure out is that certain age groups or any, any particular reasons why that was higher in 2019?
I think the, Bill, Bryant here, I'll jump in real fast. I think some of this can actually absolutely be officer driven as well. And so that's one of the things, if you look back a couple of years ago, when Sylvia was here as the chief, one of the things that we had done was trying to go out and make it to all the shift briefings, explain what the impact is. And so if one officer makes 25 stops for a particular thing, and, and I think this one is, if they don't know that, if we don't tell them, hey, you might be, you know that you're doing this, and that's part of the education process here. So I think that, and Melissa might be able to help me out. I think some of that increases by one or two of the officers who were working maybe a problem area. So I'll let her, if there's anything else you want to flesh out there, Melissa, at all?
And so the, the fix-it tickets, we did 153 of those in 2019. That has been much lower in 2020. And we can expect that to continue to be an anomaly until after, after COVID. But yes, Bryant is correct. The, the license and registration violations was, was driven by just one or two officers.
So were one or two officers targeting, they were just like looking for license, registration expirations? Is that what it was?
So yeah, Sharice, what, what normally can happen is most officers will perhaps have a couple of things that they know about. It's something is, so it's if a license tag is expired, they might just make that stop. And that's something that they might do. People don't have fuzzy dice anymore obstructing their windshield, but that used to be something that people might stop somebody for. So, yeah, this, this appears to be, and, and this appears to be something that's more along those lines where someone was, that was a particular thing that that officer goes, oh, there's something I, I can, you know, it's against the law, so I'm going to go ahead and stop that.
Okay.
Right.
Arielle.
Thank you, Melissa, for putting all this data together. I know it's a big job. I was wondering, in the previous reports you've done, you've kind of disaggregated the traffic issues, community caretaking and the targeted patrol. And I didn't see that this time. Was there a reason why you decided not to include that?
And so yes, you're correct. That was not included in this. And we're, it, it seems to be, right, you want to help me out with this one?
Yes, I will gladly. So part of the, part of the issue with that particular, and I think what you're talking about is the motivation for the stop. And we have some data and that is, if I ran, it's always something that the officers struggle with trying to code a particular thing. What's the motivation for the stop? And in a context, it's very like a council meeting, we can, oh, that makes sense in a way we move on. But when an officer does those, I think it, it's sometimes difficult. So if they, if I don't write, so if I stop them for this issue, is that a, is this a community caretaking role or is it a traffic safety issue? And I think some of these weren't defined very well. So we've had some struggle with this. Melissa, you gave me some numbers. I, I don't know how, because we're not as confident in those as we would like to be. Generally speaking, I think the traffic safety issue was about 85% of the time. Community caretaking was 12% of the time and targeted sort of patrol was only 3% of the time. So it, it just, it seems to be one that we're not as confident in our data as we would like to be.
So I, I was able to find last, the last time this was presented in, in 2018, it was 84, 14 and two. So at least based on the, if, if we can trust the data, it seems like it's very similar to previous years. The reason I bring this up is because there's a lot of conversation about pretextual stops. And this is where we got that information from was we got it from this chart. And I, if, if memory serves, I believe targeted patrol was synonymous with pretextual stops. Is that, is that correct?
So it is, it's not quite that, it's not quite that simple. I think generally speaking, yes. So for instance, I dug out an old memo that, that Lieutenant Sanders had written on, on this particular topic. And it was trying to, you, you could have, I guess, the same sort of violation. And if it's, I'm trying to solve a traffic problem, then it's a, a traffic issue. If it's, I'm trying to solve a particular criminal problem in a specified area, then that would be targeted patrol. Memory not necessarily equate exactly to pretextual. So the idea with pretextual stops, I mean, well, you, we've had this discussion. And then the final, it could be community caretaking. So we could have a particular issue that might fall under all three, depending on what that motivation is. So it, it's just, I guess, like I said, I think the officers kind of struggle with some of these, with some of that data, but it, it's at least similar to what it's been in the past.
So is the idea that you're going to be, you're proposing to stop collecting that data because it's, it's tricky data? Or are you thinking about recording kind of how people code those different items?
So I, I, my, we've had some internal discussions and I think it's sort of, it goes to, we were trying to look at, I know at some point, there was some other talk about what the scope of a stop was and we were going to go beyond the scope of that particular stop. So if we stop somebody for expired license plate and we, in the backseat, see a ski mask and duct tape and a knife, we might go, oh, that's interesting. We're going to ask this driver questions. We, we've been trying to buy the, discuss whether or not there's a, is there a better way to kind of drive it, some of that same, that pretextual discussion that you're, that you're talking about. So I believe the data is still being collected even under 2020's craziness. I haven't, I don't, I don't know what we're going to get out of the 2020 data. So I guess, Mary Alice, to your question is, I don't know just yet. We've been having some discussions about, is there a better way to drive it or drill down to that? So I guess, Mary Alice, to your question is, um, I don't know just yet. We've been having some discussions about is there a better way to drive it or drill down to that particular issue?
Okay, um, and then in terms of the fix it ticks it, fix it, they're not tickets, right? They're they're coupons, so to speak. Would those be under warnings? Where would that be classified under?
Um, it would be under equipment, the stop would be equipment violation and then it is only for warnings.
Okay, that that's what I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Sharice?
I I a a question that I have is, are the the um the dispar- this disparities, uh, do they seem to occur more in um when it, when there is a citizen calling as opposed to a police officer just happening up on the situation?
Um, so occasionally we will get calls into the dispatch center to report like, oh, you know, there's somebody that that I saw that almost swiped me off the road and that's called a, it's a make your own case. Um, so an officer can be called out and then an officer can can attempt to make that stop. Um, I, that's not collected in the data though, so I can, I can see how many of those calls that we get, but I can't match it to whether there was a stop that was made from that call.
Okay.
So that is not unfortunately data that I have.
I I would, I would offer uh anecdotally speaking, Sharice, that'd be a very, very tiny minuscule amount of any of these are sort of somebody called in to say this person specifically, this red Mustang just almost ran me off the road. Those are very, that would be a very small. Now, we might have some, a citizen call who said, people are running my stop sign all the time. Can you help with extra effort?
I've made that call myself.
So we might have those kinds of things, but and and those would be the things that might direct um an officer when they have some downtime on their shift.
Okay, so so some of these, most of these stops are based on um uh patrol officer in the area and notices a particular uh violation.
Uh, yes, that's correct, a- and unless you want to credit this, and that was part of the analysis of why uh Melissa was breaking down those that are on the selective traffic enforcement program step where we actually dictate to the officers, these are the areas that you're gonna go versus non-step or routine patrol stops when they're out doing their own, uh, well, I've handled that call, I finished that report, I got an hour before my lunch break. Um, you know, so and so's complained about this particular area, I'm gonna go work on that, so.
Okay.
Bill Brown?
Um, yeah, on the uh, it's the crash data, um, the cr- the disparity or the uh driving population calculated from the crash data over the past ten years is varied from like eighteen to twenty-four percent, something like that for African American, black. Using the number of crashes, can you calculate the confidence interval for those? Is it within a couple percent? Um, how much of that apparent decrease in disparity ratios is due to like, you know, potential sampling error?
Um, yeah, so that's it, you know, you can, you can see kind of where our our percentage of the drivers that were stopping, at least from from twenty twelve to twenty eighteen of black drivers maintained about thirty. Our disparity ratio, however, went down because that denominator increased. Um, and similarly in twenty nineteen, our percentage of black drivers that we stopped increased, but our disparity ratio went down because the our estimated driving population are looking at um the percentage of black drivers that were involved in traffic crashes also increased. So it was kind of proportional on that. Um, I did not calculate confidence intervals, um, but that is, that is something that I can, I can do. Um, yeah.
It'd just be good to know, you know, uh, if you, actually, if you do the buyers on that disparity ratio graph that looks like it's going down and you do do the uh ninety-five percent confidence based on the sampling from the crash data, it would be interesting to see how many of those overlap, um, you know, versus a clear um difference.
I got a question, Melissa. Um, one of your graphs showed the um the breakdown of uh stops that were done during daylight hours and during evening twilight dark now hours. And uh, it sounded like the uh, the number of stops of African Americans was not, didn't change. So it seemed like it that there was, it sort of disproved the fact that there was implicit bias in the stops based on whether the officer could observe the occupant or whether it was too dark to observe the occupant. Did that, did that actually, is that, am I interpreting that right?
Uh, so we're only looking at the stops from like four PM to seven PM. Um, and so we're, we're taking that and we're breaking them, the stops into, is it daylight or is it darkness? Uh, so would an officer be able to discern the race of the driver? Should they be interested in in that? Um, and if if they were and if there was racial bias in the decision-making where you you see a vehicle and you decide whether to stop that vehicle, you would expect there to be a higher percentage of African Americans stopped during the daytime when there's enough light to be able to see the race of the driver versus during the nighttime. Um, there was not a a significant difference between black drivers stopped when you could see versus when you could not see. Um, but the racial disparity was present at both. Um, so it doesn't appear to be an individual decision-making where an officer's visually observing, you know, five white drivers before he or she stops the black driver. That doesn't appear to be what's happening based on that analysis.
So at least in one aspect of uh police uh policy or or practice, but uh we don't seem to be getting uh a disparity uh problem. But it's, I'm just looking for like a grain of hope, perhaps in the uh rather difficult uh field of uh uh problems that we are trying to sort out.
Yeah.
So I don't know, just just noticed it, I guess. It's just, it struck me as being rather curiously nice, perhaps.
Yeah, um, it doesn't appear to be individual officer decision-making. It appears to be based on where where officers are spending time, either responding to calls or doing patrols. And that's, that's the location that they're making the stops. And so that'll maybe be a nice bridge into our part two here, if no one else has any questions.
Okay, and maybe we can make the bridge.
Diane has a question.
Well, Diana's a, but also Jared has got a question, so let's.
I I was, I was just going to say, if you want a grain of hope, I think we should move on to part two because um we do have a radically different approach to traffic stops in Urbana. And then if people have questions, going back to the twenty nineteen study, we can always go back to that, but I want to make sure folks we, it's nine forty-eight and I want to make sure you all have enough time to to hear what Sarah and Melissa have to say about part two.
Yeah, Jared.
Uh, just a quick question on that uh night stop uh situation. If uh an officer is following a vehicle and runs a plate, are they not able to see the racial uh composition of the driver through uh what they pull up on their screen if they run a plate?
Uh, Secretary of State does not collect information on race uh drivers, but correct, right?
That is correct.
So they don't, they don't see, I mean, they can see a name though.
Yes, to be, you'd be the name of the registered owner, uh, I suppose, whether that's exactly the driver or not. But no, there's, there's no, there's no racial data on the um, on the Secretary of State response.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're gonna, we're gonna transition and we're gonna bridge. Um, so as as Melissa started to to work on some of these numbers back in the summertime, um, I I I I formed a little working group of officers. Um, and uh we had detective patrol, white, black, male, female in as part of this small little working group. And we 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 kind of decided that we needed to sort of reexamine this. Let's, let's, let's take a maybe a different approach. And I said, one of the interesting things is a- at least for me, and I can remember this started a couple of years ago uh when Melissa started to use the geography um in the calls for service and the traffic stops and sort of those heat maps and overlaying those, that that's where this started. And then when she has now done the math with regards, or not her, I guess, thank you to the university students, but with regards to the veil of darkness um and how that, there was no statistical difference on either side of the twilight. The base disparity ratio still exists, but there wasn't anything um beyond. Um, and then we looked at um when we discussed the 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 step details and you look at that and how the disparity ratio um for the uh step details over the last couple of years, when we were much more intentional about where we put the selective traffic details. Um, when we, wh- when we, when we took that all into account and remembering that the primary purpose of traffic stops is for traffic safety, um, which uh when we took all that in account, remembered the primary purpose, uh, what we've decided to try for twenty twenty-one is to use the step model for all of our traffic enforcement efforts in twenty twenty-one. So um we would just be using, so there's data out there that would say this is where the crashes occur, these are where the high volume is, this is where the personal injury accidents occur. That's what we want to try to do is we want to try to use these step details as a model. Um, as we had come to this in our little group, we were very proud, at which point somebody immediately after the group says, well, you know, Fayetteville, they did this, they did some Google work and by God Fayetteville, North Carolina had done something, some similar analysis. And what Fayetteville, North Carolina did was uh, or what they learned in theirs, and I have not read the entire study. It's um beyond my sociology one eighty-five stats class abilities, Mary Alice, to remember a- all of this stuff from way back in the day. But um, but they, they did, they learned some things. Number one, it was a, they decreased their disparity ratio in their traffic stops. Number two, they decreased traffic crashes. And and then number three, there's no significant change in any kind of a crime rate. So the proposal is that we would be using again that step model for all of our our traffic stops. Um, we had used, we had made presentations, I've been to all of the uh shift briefings already and we started this um learning process. This is a dramatic difference, a vast departure from how we've done this traditionally. But what we want to do is remember that we're using traffic safety as our primary functioning and we're gonna function uh here. And we want to use traffic data, uh, that crash data, um, just like we did. If it works for steps, we believe it should be effective when it comes to um our routine um traffic during the time. A- as as the memo had said, which was quite a effort with different people having different parts into it. So hopefully I read clear uh cleanly by the end, but one of the um, the 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 questions that we wanted to ask for, or one of the issues we had left over was, well, what do we do uh if something happens right in front of us that's not in this particular zone? And that's when um and we're, we we, well, if this is, if it's a significant traffic issue where there's a life safer, life safety danger issue, we still want the officers to address it. So we talked about things like, uh, for example, uh, Goodwin and Fairview. And somebody rolls the stop sign at three in the afternoon and almost hits two little girls that are getting ready to cross the street and the parents and the teachers are pointing at the car and the officer happened to be sitting nearby, could they act? Yes. But we want them to act. We don't want them to simply disregard. But if it's three o'clock in the morning and they're Goodwin and Fairview and somebody rolls a stop sign as they're having a cup of coffee, it's not in a traffic zone, they can't stop that car for that infraction. Um, and so that's, that's just a very quick sort of summary about this. I know that tonight um and in briefings and in other um discussions about this, there's been a lot of discussion regarding statistical analysis and what denominator do we use and rolling averages and this average and study this and and I understand those things, they might help us perhaps to a degree, but the bottom line is that we're disproportionately stopping our black drivers in Urbana and how do we change that behavior? And we do it by looking at where the officers are and let's move them for their efforts to um areas that we've designated, just like we do in step um in our step patrol. So that's the short version of the model. And again, um, is a- as the mayor has said, this is a vast departure from how we've done uh done our traffic enforcement in the past. So um with that, um, I will uh let some questions uh with uh, that is, take it over.
Sure, thanks very much. Uh, well, I guess the mayor will start.
I just want to also remind, or this is also consistent with um our commitment to Vision Zero with an emphasis on how do we make our streets safer for pedestrians and bicyclists and drivers? And if our traffic enforcement efforts focus on areas where the traffic accidents are occurring and crashes are occurring, I think we're going to make our community safer for everybody involved. So so this is all gonna come together, I think, the way it should.
Bill Goldberg?
Uh, Chief, I appreciate it. Um, you know, I think it's an excellent idea. Uh, part of um traffic safety is communication, the public information aspect. Has there been any uh idea of when you identify the high crash areas uh heavily message those neighborhoods uh that they know that um that a certain intersection, um, we'll just use Lincoln and Bradley is a, is a, is a high crash area and somehow message the community that that they're, that they have entered into a high crash area and they would uh expect to see more enforcement at that location as opposed to some other random location in Urbana.
Um, so I I don't know if I have a uh with regards to that specific area, like you're entering a particular traffic zone. Um, there has been some discussion about, well, do you release the zones and not release the zones? And I'm not necessarily against it. These are the fifteen areas throughout town. And truthfully, uh, I think they might change a little bit over time. Um, but they're areas that you would sort of expect, um, where we have intersections, where we have higher rates of speed. Um, and I don't have, uh, I don't, Melissa might be able to give a little bit more on this, but um, a- and I think even tonight's presentation will get some publicity as sort of how we're doing this. Truthfully, I'm not sure if Lincoln and Bradley is actually one of our, there actually is, I don't know.
I just use it as an example. I'll, I'll go back to five points, okay? I'll, I'll use uh, use Cunningham and the and University. Regardless of whether I'm an Urbana resident, a Champaign resident, or I live in um, uh, you know, Downers Grove and I, and I'm a visitor to um to Urbana. If I, if I approach five points, I probably would want to know that I'm approaching a high crash area just for my own sake. So I could be a little bit more vigilant and maybe um alter my my own driving practices, just just a thought.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Alice?
Uh, thank you, Brian and and Melissa. It's uh pretty exciting to hear some new innovative ways of addressing the situation. So thank you for all your time that you've invested in gathering input from a variety of people. One of the things that really changed in my time since city council is that when I first came on board, I think our disparity ratio is about one point six four. Um, and when the step stops were reevaluated, uh, it was exciting because all of a sudden our disparity ratio really was cut in half in terms of what it was before. Um, so that was really a great step forward, but of course it didn't solve the problem. Um, and so utilizing something that's worked in the past, which is basically concentrating the step stops in terms of where the accidents and the traffic issues are, hopefully will rectify some of the issues that we've been having, the persistent issues um that we've been having. So so that said, is is there a plan? Um, I know, Melissa, I think the first time you and I sat down together, we looked at some traffic accident data and you said, hmm, I wonder why we still have stuff over here and it had to do with construction at one time. Um, so obviously things change um as there's detours and reroutes. I think Washington was shut down for a little bit, Vine Street's been shut down. How frequently are you planning on evaluating the uh accident data so that you can recalculate the step areas?
Um, so we've talked about it a couple of times. It'll probably be at least quarterly. Um, so if it happens that, you know, we have, we have a high concentration of officers out on High Cross and then our, you know, our crashes move over to Windsor or something, so if people start taking alternate routes or if people become safer where they are, then perhaps we can, we can reallocate. Um, this will be, you know, fluid and based on the data. Um, so we'll be able to take our, take our crash data and reallocate as necessary.
Okay, and how often do we do, do we do that quarterly now?
Um, we, well, right now I'm doing it monthly, but we're, I think, discontinuing step for a little bit, so. So I'll, I'll get an email from the, from the sergeant that, that sets the, like posts the overtime. And he'll say, hey, can you, can you run what we had last October? And so then I'll run what we had last October and then he'll use that to, to demo or to, to see where we should put the steps this October.
Okay, Bryant, the example that you gave was a pretty cut and dry example. You know, there's two kids sitting in front and you're going to blow a stop sign, you might hit them versus it's three o'clock in the morning and you roll through a stop sign and there's nobody around. Of course, it's going to be more challenging when you, when you get into the things that aren't as black and white. So have, have, what kind of guidance have you given the patrol people in terms of how to discern? What is a public risk here? It's not hitting people, right? We all agree that hitting somebody is, is definitely a public risk, but there's, there's variants of that.
So that's an excellent question and that's, we're, we're still working on that. So matter of fact, even we've had some internal discussions. And I, I don't know that we've come down to an exact definition that we're all happy with. So just to sort of, matter of fact, last week as we, as I was going to all the briefings. Was to sort of lay this concept out, let me start with this easy one. If you will, to, to, you know, to say, okay, here's the, here's the continuum, everybody kind of understands this. And now we're going to move, I guess, to the more difficult ones. I will tell you that it is my, it is my intention that there shouldn't be tons and tons of these. Because that's going to be obvious, the next question is it, well, okay, so of the ones that were outside of the traffic zones, what are those numbers like? And, you know, and what were those for? Those should be extremely small numbers. I don't know exactly what that might be, I will tell you that we, what was it Melissa? I think we make eight to 12 stops roughly a day, or we have. I will tell you that, you know, so if we stopped 3,600 people, that's 300 in a, in a month. For instance, in COVID, back in March, I think we went from 300 normally to like 30 stops in the entire month. I would expect that this to drop, this should be for significant traffic safety behavior issues. And to the point that there's that, if, if some, in my opinion, there better be a traffic ticket assigned. We're not going to do this and then give a warning that these should be significant. And I don't know that I have a, a solid definition just yet, Mary Alice, for you.
So your plan is to roll this out at the beginning of 2021, is that correct?
Yes.
So in the next six weeks, seven weeks, somewhere around there?
Correct.
Charisse.
So how are you going to determine where you're going to be putting? Officers to, you know, patrol particular bad stop, accident prone places?
And so what I can do is I can, I take all of the, the accidents that we have in the city and I plot them on the map. And so similarly to that, that heat map that we did before, I can do that with accidents. And then I can do that again with personal injury accidents. And then I can flag just little straight segments that, that have a high, like, you know, the, the, when we did this, I did an example map. And I've got like 15 segments that have 70% of all of our accidents. Because it's, you know, it's on highly trafficked areas, it's on, you know, five points. And, you know, some of the, the ones that you would expect. And so those will be the, the stop zones then, that officers will be able to run traffic or make stops in those zones.
Well, and I ask because I'm, I, I know as, it was sometime last year when, when I was having an issue. Watching people just basically run the stop signs at Kohler and Fairview and. Was it Lynnview and Fairview? I mean, people just wouldn't even hardly stop. And myself, because it seems to be like a low lit area. And I had talked to Brian about this, it's like I, I, I would drive in that area to take my mom to get her hair done and to go get her mids. And it seemed like every time, it wasn't a place, it wasn't a route that I took frequently. But practically, it seemed every time there, I would witness someone running the stop signs there. And so if, and I, and, and I, I believe Bryant did put, put someone there just to slow that down. And there's been a couple of times in the dark where I've almost hit people because they just, they just walk. You know, and I don't see them because, and it's, it's come very close to, to that kind of issue. So if a citizen calls and says, for example, like I did. It says, we're having problems with people running these stop signs. Would that be a, also a, a reason for you to, to, to specify where police will be located?
The, the, the short answer is no.
Okay.
That's the short answer, because that's, that's what we're trying to control for. So we've had some of these internal discussions and we've already warned the mayor that, because Charisse, it's not just you. But I've gotten emails from others on the council who have said, hey, or citizens who said, hey, I've got it, I've got something that can you help?
I did it because so many people came to me and said, you know what? Nobody's stopping it, it wasn't just me, but it's like, yeah, I've noticed that.
So that's, so I, I think, I think some of this speaks to, we've talked about different ways that we might have to be a little more creative. And be smarter about how we do certain things. So whether there are something even like if there's a, if there's, if we think maybe perhaps people aren't seeing it or there's a lighting or is there an environmental factor? Can we, can we bring public works in or whomever there might be, say, can you help us with this? There's a, you know, so there's an issue, the presence of a squad car makes everybody's foot come off the gas pedal. I've been doing this 26 and a half years, my foot comes off the gas pedal when I, to this day. So there's just by presence, we can have, we can have an impact. The city of Urbana, the public works department has a speed trailer and we work with them and try to get it dispatched to certain areas. So if we have a particular issue on, hey, they're speeding in this area, sometimes people don't realize what's happening even. And so we put the trailer, the speed trailer out and it might sit there for a week or two. So I think there's some other ways that we can try and address some of these concerns without simply making traffic stops. And, and, and then writing warnings or, or tickets.
Okay.
Hey, Bill Brown and then Bill Goldberg.
Yeah, thanks. I think this is a great discussion, I think especially that last point. Charisse made part of the vision zero. Strategy is, is the data informed locations of traffic enforcement and things like that. But also it's part of it is anticipating potential crash locations that you don't really have the data on yet. And you can anticipate those by citizen complaints, close calls. And, you know, the, the type of things that Charisse and, and the chief were talking about. So I appreciate that a lot that that's being taken into consideration and there are alternatives to dealing with that. Because a little bit of enforcement isn't going to cut it probably even, you know, if, for example, speeding on Cottage Grove. You can enforce it for a while, but once you stop enforcing it, it'll start up again. So there really needs to be some strategy there to, to slow traffic that doesn't involve enforcement. And I'm sure other places are like that too. So I'm, I'm encouraged by this whole plan, I think it's the right direction. Hopefully officers can, can differentiate that type of situational awareness. Where, you know, somebody may make a minor infraction because they have good visibility and they can see, you know, nobody's coming. Versus somebody just blowing through a stop sign without even making an attempt to slow or something. And maybe one example you could give them is if you're riding your bike, you kind of do that anyway. And, and hope you don't get the ticket because, I mean, it's a lot more effort to stop and start on a bike than it is in a car. So you tend to slow and if no, you know, if you have good, good vision in all directions, you just go on through. And in Urbana, half the time the people with the stop signs, even if they're waiting there and you're waiting for them to go, they'll wave you on through anyway. But, you know, I think just kind of common sense approach, hopefully people will get it. But I, I definitely think this is the right direction and, and should help alleviate some of the disparity.
Bill, I, I think you're right, I think the stop signs is, is a, if you ever need something to do, somebody to go watch a stop sign for a while. Very rarely is there a complete succession of movement at a stop sign. So back 20 years ago, if I was running traffic, I would, you could really watch the stops and then you'd get sort of a flavor of, okay, what's, what is exactly? At what point am I going to stop somebody? It's just similar to like speeding tickets, you know, I, I, we don't want the officer stopping and writing tickets for 33 and a 30. And so, you know, a similar sort of analysis applies with a, with a stop sign even, so yes, I understand.
So Bill Goldberg, you had a question?
Yes, this is for Melissa. You plot a lot of data, do you also plot driving under the influence of alcohol and driving under the influence of drugs? For the city, you know, you'd mentioned crash data, you know, there could be maybe a low frequency of property damage crashes in a certain area of the city. But of those crashes, there may be a high percentage of some sort of impairment, which would obviously drive enforcement as well.
And so it's lower than you would expect DUIs. We, so DUIs resulting from a traffic stop where somebody is moving and we stop them for an infraction. And all of last year there were 21. However, the DUIs is higher than that because we also, we get calls often from like, somebody's passed out at the, behind the wheel and steak and shake drive through and, and some of those things. So yes, it's plottable, but it's a, it's a small number.
Thank you.
Jared.
Um, so I've got a couple of different questions. Chief, the first one that I've got is about the pilot program. And we often say pilot for two reasons, one, because we don't know what we're going to do with it. We're testing something out and we don't know exactly how it's going to turn into a real program. So I take it this is kind of a test for a more formal policy. That will become a part of traffic enforcement itself.
Yes, I, I, I'm, we're not, we are using our best guesses based on Melissa's data. And what has happened over the course of the years to sort of say, we, we believe this is going to be effective. We may have to tweak some things, we may want to add some other things. So at this point, that's sort of why I wanted to say, hey, it's a pilot, it's brand new, let's see how this goes and then we can adjust along the way.
So that, that being said, what portion in the pilots phase do you per? Perceive that these, that this program will take up of traffic enforcement duties that officers have while on patrol?
I'm sorry, could you ask your question again, please, Jared?
The pilot program, if I, if I'm, I have, you know, 12 to 12 on Tuesday. Or six to six or whatever, whatever my shift happens to be. And I'm, and I'm on patrol in the car from, you know, for eight hours of that, of that shift I'm scheduled to be on. What percentage of a given amount of time that I'm going to be out rolling, am I participating in this pilot program? Does that make more sense that way?
Uh, yes, I, I think you understand, but we're, we're not dictating any sort of percentage. I will tell you, there are times when the officers, especially in the hot months of summer. Are going call to call and are rather busy and they don't do, they won't have time for, for traffic. This is for when they have downtime and have elected to say, listen, I've got time. I've caught up on my open cases, I've got all this done. Now I'm going to go back up into this particular area and work at five points because I've already worked three crashes there this month and I'm tired of it or whatnot. So we're going to give them the zones to work in, but we don't dictate you have to spend 10% of your shift or whatnot. Because there are times when that's effective and then there are times when that's, they just couldn't hit, hit a particular mark.
So another way to say it would be then, if you're, you know, and I know that, you know, being out and rolling around, it's kind of the last thing you do. You know, you get a ton of other things probably to do, you're responding calls, you're doing paperwork, et cetera, et cetera. Just being out and roll, roll, rolling on the streets is, is like you said, the lower, lower priority of, of those things. So another way to say it would be if they are out rolling, pursuing traffic enforcement. Is this going to be the only kind of traffic enforcement that they will essentially be participating in?
If I'm understanding your question correctly, the answer is yes, this is where they will make, this is where they're, with their doing traffic enforcement in these zones, this is where they will do it. In, in the zones identified by Melissa.
Gotcha. Um, the reason I'm asking that is because I don't know if you saw, did you read Daryl's letter that he sent, I think last, last night before the meeting?
I, I got it, I got it today and gave it to Melissa later today even, so I did see his, correct, yes.
Okay, so I'm asking that because he brought up something that isn't addressed in, you know, it's not specifically addressed in, in the memo and in this, in this concept. And that was protectual stops or investigatory stops and how those play into this model. Before I ask the questions that he asked in there, how do you have a feeling for how those are going to play into, into this model?
So I, I'll speak to a couple of different things here. Number one, if we, however, maybe wonky the motivation data is, as was pointed out earlier, still 85%. Of the traffic stops or conducted are by, are through, are for traffic safety type issues. Relatedly with regards to the, the protectual stop. So some of the discussion that we're having is, somebody might say, well, I'm going to stop a car for no plate light. Because I suspect they might be involved in narcotics activity. Okay, and so, well, let's, we're going, what we want to do is no, we want the officers to stop them for narcotics activity. If you, I do this, I do this, I do this, we develop probable cause or reasonable suspicion, which is a lesser standard. You can make a temporary detention to, to do that. And that is, is, is a violation of a criminal code. Okay, so somebody robs the bank and the red Mustang is speeding through town, we can, we can conduct, we can stop that car. But it's not stopped for a traffic violation. It's stopped for robbing the bank, even though it's on the highway or on the city streets with the lights flashing. And so the idea is we would like, and, and again, this I think has some of the details that I want to try to, we want to try to hammer out a little bit better. But the idea is if you're stopping someone for a criminal violation, then stop them for the criminal violation. As, as opposed to some sort of pretext.
And, and stopping for a criminal violation would be of at least a moderate, you know, the reasonable suspicion or the probable cause. Reason would have to be evidence in order for that stop to take place.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Um, and I know that we're, we're talking about, you know, enumerating some of this stuff into something, you know, this is kind of like a, a broad scope. And we're going to have something more specific, I'm assuming we're going to see before this program rolls out. Is that your impression?
Uh, with regards to the specificity, I don't think it, that I've gotten far, far enough along to determine whether or not what was going to go before the council. We discussed even like an FAQs kind of thing that even if the officers say, hey, this is what we are planning. So I hadn't gotten that far yet.
Okay, well, I'm just, I know we don't have it now, I'm saying, are we going to see it again? Can we see it again before it goes live, if you will?
So I guess that'll, I'll be, I guess we'll have to have a, have a discussion with the mayor and we'll, we'll figure that out. I, I don't know that I know the answer for that right now, Jared, with regards to specifics. I don't think it would be an, an issue, but we're going to try to, I got to get it together, so I, I'm not opposed to it.
Okay, I just think it would be, I mean, obviously it's going to be important for the officers to understand what we, what we've just discussed. And, you know, needing to have that reasonable suspicion and probable cause for stopping vehicles and not using a traffic, you know, a minor traffic violation as a pretext to search for further crimes. So that was one of the things Daryl had brought up in, in his letter. And the other one that he had brought up was how, you know, we have that small percentage. But it still exists of traffic stops that turn into something more than that. And he had asked, and I'm not sure that I've seen it, perhaps it's there, perhaps it is not. The policy on searches of vehicles when, when people are stopped, do we have? We have a policy on the UPD page about what citizens can and cannot do when they're stopped and a search has been requested of them, but not if an officer hasn't met the profile of, is it reasonable suspicion to search, to search a vehicle? What's the, what's the bar they have to meet?
So it's, there's always probable cause unless that's like weapons and we can, then it's reasonable suspicion. So, but.
Okay. So it's probable causes is the line at which an officer stops me and says, Mr. Miller, I have probable cause to believe you have X in your car, which is illegal. I'm going to search your vehicle. Would you please exit the vehicle?
Is that, I'm sorry, was that a question or?
Yes, yes. That probable cause is what I need as an officer to tell a citizen, you need to exit the vehicle because I'm going to search your vehicle now.
Yes.
If you don't have a choice, I'm, I'm doing this.
So yes, that is, that is one way. There are also other, there are other avenues, I suppose. But that's where the, that's where consent search comes in as, as, as well.
Okay. Well, and that's what Durrell had brought up in his, is, you know, what is the difference? Do we have a clearly delineated to citizens what their rights are either through policy? Or do officers communicate that to citizens as, you know, I'm asking to you, citizen, to consent to a search. You do not have to agree to do this. And that's a different situation than when an officer has a probable cause to do so and they don't need permission to do so. They can do so by right.
So we have, yes, that's correct. So when officer, listen, we've got this, that or the other. Here's what I'm asking tonight and people do say no. So, you know.
So do we, do we have a specific policy on consent search in?
There, there's just, there is a policy on searching. I couldn't tell you exactly right now what the exact details were with regards to consent or what, what the exact verbiage is in, in it right now.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm just bringing, bringing it to mind because when we're thinking, you know, you made a large point of, you know, you know, one of the biggest ways that the UPD interacts with citizens is through traffic stops. It's probably, it's not, if not, it is the biggest way, right? That we have contacts between officers currently and citizens.
I don't, Melissa might know that off the top of her head, but you're right. It is one of the biggest ways and that we interact. Yes. Yes, sir.
So, you know, we're talking about community police relations and things we can do to improve that. And as we're thinking about, you know, what we can do specifically, you know, this is a holistic, I think it's more holistic than even it's described in, in the memo in trying out this pilot program. So, you know, I'm just trying to go into some of the things that happened in that, which Durrell had brought up in his letter. And, you know, if we're looking for a positive way to do that, being as informative as possible about a consent search might be a really good policy to enact, to enumerate, to put on, you know, to, when we're looking at our policies and how we write them, you know, an officer being very upfront, being very, you know, straightforward to citizens saying, I'm, I'm asking to you to consent to a search. You do not need to consent to this search. Here are your options at this, at this time. Here's what I can do if you say no. And just explaining that to people, I think, would go a long way so that they don't feel intimidated, they don't feel fearful of the interaction.
I, I think that's absolutely true. And I think one of the things that I preach here is education in all different ways that, hey, we stopped you today because of this, outside of even traffic stops. Hey, I'm here knocking on your door today because of, we got to complain about noise, the dog bark, whatever it is. The more education, the more information we can provide the citizens, not always, but generally speaking, the, the more cooperation and compliance we get.
We are approaching 10:30. You may want to extend the meeting if you want to have further dialogue or if we feel like we've covered the topic pretty well this evening and want to bring it, the discussion to a close. It could be a good time to find out.
That, that was the extent of my comments. I had just about gotten through it. So there are others that we'll need to extend. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah. So pretty, pretty excellent discussion. Totally. Really. Yeah. Diane Marlin.
I'm happy to bring this to a close. I would encourage the public to read Chief Seraphin's memo. It's, it's brief, but it is going to be a radically different approach to traffic stops. And we, we, you know, we, we've talked a lot about addressing systemic racism in, in our communities. And what we've seen in traffic stops and looking at them through a different lens is that our system of making stops was itself racially biased because it was based on location of stops and largely linked to areas where there were high calls of service. So if you're going to change systemic racism, you change the system, you change what you're doing. And that's what this proposal is. It also shifts the focus from questioning individual officers motivation. And that's where a lot of the focus was, is why are these stops being made? You know, what's the reasoning behind it to, to, to the true, much of the true reasoning behind the disparity ratio? And that is the location of the stops itself. So, so this is an example of, of really getting at the system that's creating the racial disparity. And I, and that's why I'm extremely, I'm, I'm confident this is going to make an enormous difference in, in these numbers. So I also want to acknowledge that this was officer driven. It was officer generated. And I want to thank, we didn't actually mention the officers involved who, who worked on this plan. And I think they deserve credit for, for doing this.
Okay. I guess that's my cue.
And you have three minutes to do that.
I'll be fast. Deputy Chief Searls was involved in this, as was I was and Melissa. But we had Officer Sarah Lynx, Sergeant Corey Coker, Detective Rich Coleman and Officer Seth King. So this was this small group that kind of had multiple meetings. And I don't know if we ever met for fewer than two hours. So thank you to them.
They put a lot of thought into this, a lot of work, and then it, it, it is going to, it's going to make a difference. I'm really confident. Thank you.
I think on that high note, we can thank everybody for participating. Good discussions tonight. And with that, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Bye there, buddy.
Bye. Good night.
Thank you.